The Sunshine Meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, November 2nd, 2017. I'll call Michelle, please.
Councilwoman Aller.
President.
Councilman Azar.
Here.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Frostin.
President.
Councilman DeBon.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Asser.
President.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
Aller President.
Hey, if this is your first time at a Sunshine Meeting, there'll be no action taken place this evening. Our agendas are at this few up here. So if you're here to talk about anything that's not on our agenda, next week would be an opportunity for you to speak on that. We allow 30 minutes to do so. I am going to ask that if anybody is going to speak on any item that's on tonight, that you limit your comments to three minutes because, as you can see on our agenda, we have a full slate. So with that being said, first order of business, Michelle, please.
Special Ordinance 50, 2017. Approving the issuance and sale of special taxing district bonds of the Terre Haute Sanitary District. This was previously tabled.
Please just take on this, please.
Good evening, Council. I'm Dennis Sauton with both McKinney &amp; Evans. We have to respond, Council, to the Sanitary District. I'll act here to just introduce some introductory comments here on the special ordinance. And we've got representatives of the Sanitary District here along with the financial advisors and engineers. And just as a reminder, this is an ordinance that's approving special taxing district bonds of the Sanitary District in the amount not to exceed $70 million to finance long-term control plan improvements for Phase II of the Long-Term Control Plan. The Sanitary District met several months ago, has adopted resolutions for its revenue bonds and then its Sanitary District bonds. And those bonds require Council approval. And that's the ordinance before you tonight.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 50, 2017? Please come to the microphone. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Donald Hyde. I live in 1411 Poplar Street. I'm a lifetime resident. I would like to speak on this because, again, as I've said before in other meetings, I do not believe that the taxpayers, the citizens of Terre Haute or Vigo County are properly informed about exactly what's going on. And I've attended your meetings, and I still have questions. I would like these people who are going to speak about this to tell us exactly why they have to spend that amount of money. What is, I have been a component for Clean Air and Clean Water all my life. I fought battles over it and lost them and won some. But even I don't understand why they're spending this money and why it has to happen now. So I'd like to hear them enlighten us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 50, 2017? Council? Dennis, I'll start with you, if you'd like to come up here, please. I know a couple of months ago, we had discussed the ramifications of the FBI investigation. And what would be some of the reasons why the State Revolving Fund would decide, depending on what the investigation entails, they're not wanting to lend us any money?
So far, I haven't heard of any new details from the FBI investigation. My understanding, that's still ongoing. And I haven't been made aware of any facts. Councilman, I think your question is kind of, what type of circumstances would occur that the SRF program may say, you know, we want to put the brakes on the financing. This is something that we may not be entrusted in right now. I can't really say for sure what it would be, but my mind would be, as a lender and provider of funds on something like this, if something were to come out to show that there was events occurring at the utility that were having a significant impairment on the revenue flows of the utility, it would jeopardize the ability of the utility to make debt service payments.
Okay. And I know you, is it you or you and Dean have just had the conversations with the State Revolving Fund?
Both Dean and I have had conversations with them.
And when you originally had this conversation with them last year on the project, was they under the impression that the price was going to be $42 million or that it was going to be what we're asked to do today?
It's what you're going to be asked to do today.
Right.
And that, I do want to clarify that because we've had conversations with them over the years, starting with the initial financing back in 2012. And as events have occurred over the last four or five years, so they've known this project is coming. And it may have been that sometime last year, we went with them and said, hey, there's a Phase II financing coming up, and we estimate it's going to be, I think at the time, you know, it was in the nature of $40 million. But certainly, since the project costs have come in and come in higher, we've had subsequent follow-up meetings with them, so they understand it's a $70 million, not to exceed that.
Okay. So what if we were to do this for $90 million? Would they have any issues with that? Where would be the line in the sand that they would have?
Their line in the sand all has to do, and Dean may want to chime in on this, is really the ability of the city to pay back the bonds. It all has to do with coverage, revenue's ability to levy the tax. So that's what they're really looking to.
Okay. Well, my next questions are for Dean. So Dean, do you think you'll look here? So what do you think the line in the sand would be on that?
I don't know that they're going to have a line in the sand. I would say that it's always project-specific. SRF, they do have their own in-house engineers as well that evaluate the projects as they come in and provide comments on preliminary engineering reports and so forth. So, you know, ultimately, this project will have to be bid to determine what the final cost will be. But they certainly have input along the way as to what they feel is or isn't appropriate. And to date, I haven't heard any concerns.
Well, considering the fact that we have more phases to go, that wouldn't bother them at all? Meaning what rate increases in the future? Which leads me to my next question. Is how often do you feel like we would need a rate adjustment? Two years, three years, less than 10?
Sure, less than 10. The Long-Term Control Plan, as you may be aware of, I know the Sanitary District's in conversations about possibly renegotiating the implementation timeline of some of those future projects. So that's really going to drive some of that timing. I know you've heard me say this before, but just from a general perspective, we recommend that folks are evaluating their rates every three to five years, whether they've got projects to fund or not.
Well, but I understand that. You have said that in the past. But when the administration has come before this council in the past saying we wouldn't have any for the next 20 years, so you're saying we're not going to have any rate increases in the next three to five years?
No, I wouldn't say that.
Okay. The next aspect, a question that I have is, these are property tax-based bonds, correct?
Correct.
That we're going to be paying for?
Right.
When I asked the mayor last year, what had changed for us having to do this? His first response was the fact that we were hit with property tax caps losing revenue for the Sanitary District. So do you feel, with your financial analysis, that anything has changed that is going to make it so we're not going to have any hits to the Sanitary District? Or is the Sanitary District immune to property tax cap losses?
They are not. Unfortunately, with the Sanitary District, that bond fund tax rate is the only tax rate you have. Debt service levies are generally protected. They're the last ones to absorb those tax cap losses. But when you've got a, with the Sanitary District, with the bond fund being the only fund, you don't have other funds that can absorb that tax cap loss. So it is the bond fund that's absorbing it. So you will still have some losses there, but we're hoping to lower that tax rate and to help minimize those losses.
Would it be easier to minimize those losses if the project was closer to $42 million instead of $75 million?
Sure.
Okay. Chuck, my next questions are for you. If you can come up.
First off, I appreciate the packet that you gave to the council last month. And on suggestions from Councilwoman Aller, she had reached out to Debbie at wastewater treatment plant to offer a tour to some of the facilities that some of the councils might not have been able to see. And I took advantage of that. And it was very educational for me. So one of the things, I was curious if you could do again, is explain the process on securing the PDR.
Oh, the selection process?
Yeah.
We sent out, I can't remember exactly the timeline, but last year, we sent out what we call a request for qualifications, an RFQ, to a number of different engineering firms.
When you say a number, five, 10, two, three?
Probably about 10.
10, okay.
10 different engineering firms. I think we had about four, four or five firms. And some of the firms had joined together as a kind of a team approach to, and responded to the RFQ. We had a selection committee comprised of people from the engineering office, sanitary board members, that scored each of the respondents. And then CHA was the firm that had the highest score. And then from that point, we negotiated our contract with them.
Okay. So the original Long-Term Control Plan was 2011, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you were part of that process with the Long-Term Control Plan?
Yes.
In 2011? Okay. And that plan was approved by IDM, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the one that's online on the city's website? That's 98 pages long, correct?
That's a synopsis.
Okay. And who was the engineering firm that was in charge of doing that?
HWC, Hannah Wagon Klein.
Okay. And was that included in the binder that you gave?
I'm sorry.
The Long-Term Control Plan wasn't in here, correct?
It's a two-volume set.
Okay.
It's available in our office if you'd like to.
But is it available online?
No.
Okay. All right. And then I know the whole discussion that I've had, and I know the other council members are just as frustrated as the fact that the price has doubled. So has CHA had any conversations with Hannah Wagon Klein regarding this plan?
Yes.
How often have they had conversations? Weekly, monthly?
I'm not sure. Periodically, periodically have they met.
Okay. Well, one of the things I did notice in the binder was Hannah Wagon Klein had reviewed the scope of work that CHA was going to do.
Right.
And some of the, my mindset was, I would think we would get the architects of the plan involved and see, you know, if we are doing stuff that's absolutely necessary. And there were a number of things that they had talked about that they felt like was increasing the cost. The screening aspect of it, if you look on the scope of budget, the screening, they felt like that there was less expensive options that could be considered. Is there a reason why we deviated from the original plan?
There were, screening is, there are different levels of screening. Okay. There is everything from what we call pump protection to keep large objects from getting into the pump impellers, to actually bar screening, which takes small objects out of the system. During the preliminary engineering discussion, there were talks about what kind of type of, what level of pump protection we needed. Everything from just rudimentary protection to actually fine screening. Some of those cost estimates, and there's a range of cost estimates for different levels of screening. And it hadn't really been considered initially. It was thought of, you know, during the preliminary engineering and added to the design.
Would you consider that a need or a want?
We need pump protection. Level of pump protection hasn't really been determined at this point.
Okay.
We do have bar screening at the headworks. So like I said, that's, things like that will flush out, no pun intended, in the final design, you know, of the new main lift.
Well, one of the things, when I reviewed that 98-page document, they had talked about a term called "need of the curve approach." Could you explain what that is?
That was, that has, that's basically big picture things. It's where essentially the improvements that you are, the cost, the money that you're spending get very little result in environmental, let's say, environmental output, I guess. You know, you start spending and spending and spending, and you see a nice line. The more money you spend, the better, the more benefits that you get. And then as it starts to flatten out, you start spending lots of money with very little benefit. So the curve looks, goes in a nice straight line and then flattens out. The need of the curve is what they talk about in, but that was a Long-Term Control Plan discussion that really didn't affect what we're talking about today.
But we did do that when we did the original design, correct?
Well, the plan refers to a need of the curve.
Right. So there were, when we did the Long-Term Control Plan, there were multiple options that we could implement, correct?
Oh, yeah. We looked at all kinds of options.
And part of that need of the curve approach was to see what would give us the best result for the money, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So on the screening, do you feel like we're going to be getting the savings that we would need on that? Is it a need or a want?
We need pump protection. Level of screening, like I said, is open to discussion.
Okay. The next thing that was listed on here was forced main flushing. Says a flushing system is provided for the new forced main system. While this will be an operational benefit, it is not a necessity, nor was it included in the scope of the project in the Long-Term Control Plan. So why was that added on this?
It was, it was added as a parallel force main, that's what you're referring to there, is, has value to the system. There's no redundancy. We have one force main that goes from the main lift to the treatment plant. If that force main were ever to go down, there's no redundancy in the system. It was being, it was basically thrown out as something to discuss. Do we want to include a second force main as a redundancy in our system? So that's where it came from.
So have we ever had any issues with the first line? And I'm trying to learn to be an engineer in less than a month, but have we had any issues with the first line?
Not that I know of.
So why would we feel, so to me, I would think that would be a want, not a need?
Again, that's something that would come out in the value engineering discussion.
Okay.
It would be discussed as a, it has, the parallel force main adds value to our system, okay? Now, do we need it? Is it a need or a want? That's yet to be determined. But it does add value to the system.
Okay. New force main construction, the Long-Term Control Plan did not include replacement of or supplementing the 48-inch main to the wastewater treatment facility. While there is obvious benefits and providing redundancy, the proposed plan of a dual-force main for the new lift station at the headworks has an estimated $5 million cost. So that's where you're discussing right there?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Pumping capacity, and I know you had mentioned last month that IDM had asked that we include that $16 million, or excuse me, $16 million gallon additional pump, correct?
That's the capacity, well, there's a couple of things going on. It's pump capacity of the main lift and capacity of the high-rate clarifier facility, the high-rate treatment facility.
Okay. So IDM is mandated that we do that or asking us to do that?
It's part of the permitting process.
Do you think you provide that to the council next week?
Do you want documentation of that?
That we need to have that $16 million additional?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Provisions for future expansion. While equipment for additional capacity is not provided, discussion, the PR references the inclusion of extra building capacity into the channels and structure for future needs. While this is usually good standard practice, is unknown effect this oversizing has on the budget and the cost of the project? One of the things that I noticed when I was at the facility was it seemed like there was a lot of extra space in there that, you know, wasn't being utilized. So is there a way that we can reduce that?
Inside the existing?
Is that, no, not in existing. What you're wanting to do here, is that a need or a want?
Well, the additional capacity of the HRC is a requirement from IDM.
The building?
Yeah.
The building?
Well, the building's ready to accommodate the second phase.
Okay. Structure depth, the overall depth of the structure is deeper than planned in a Long-Term Control Plan at 40 feet. The additional depth appears to be part, due in part to eliminate the need for de-watering pumps in the future relief sewer. However, no cost analysis is provided to demonstrate the financial benefit of the deeper structure, which also affects the length of screens provided. Has CHA or the engineering department done analysis on that?
Andy, no.
No? Okay. Not?
That'll be looked at in the final design.
Okay. But not before we decide to vote on this?
That's, yeah.
Non-construction costs. Given the updated construction cost estimate of $55 million as proposed fee for final design engineering of over $10 million appears to be very high by industry standards. I had mentioned that a couple of months ago. Is that a way, is there a way to lower that amount?
We did. I don't have the numbers here in front of me. But their fee is less than that.
What is it?
I don't have the numbers right at my fingertips, but I can get that, get you their fee.
Okay.
But it's less than, it's less than what the SRF was estimating.
Okay. My main thing is, I want to make it known that I know that we have mandates from the EPA and from IDM, and that we need to do the next phase of the Long-Term Control Plan. But I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to make sure that they're not paying any more than what they need to do and that we're doing what we need to do and not what we want to do. So, IDM, anybody else? Councilman Frostin?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank Chuck and Debbie Pageant for taking us through the facilities. It was very instructive. And I appreciate that it helped me understand it. I had some of the same concerns when I read over the HWC letter or document, it wasn't our thing. And I share the concerns of Council President Asser. I'm thrilled that the river is cleaner, and I want that to get better and better. And so I'm not against at all doing what we have to do under the long, the long-term plan to make that happen. But I am very concerned that, unfortunately, we're just not in the position, I don't think in our community, to build in every possible redundancy if it is not necessary. I, you know, there are all kinds of what might seem like silly analogies, but if you bring it down to the taxpayers' experience in their own lives, and they may need to do appliances of some kind, a new oven or something, and they can buy one that will last 30 years and do everything it's supposed to do, and they can cook dinner every night for their family on it, or they can buy the latest thing that you see on the Home Shopping Network or whatever that would cost twice as much or three times as much and not last any longer and not enable them in any major way to do a better job of caring for their families. And I think, you know, that's some of, that's a very simplistic way of saying, we need to do the same thing here. I don't want us to not comply with the order. I want us to comply with the order. But I think these concerns are real, and it's hard to, it's hard for me to convince myself that I can vote for a bond issue that's twice as much as I thought it was going to be when professional engineers are raising the same questions. So if you can get us answers to any of those things, that would be most helpful to all of us, I think, and IDM.
Councilman Garrison?
Thank you. Chuck, you can probably answer these, but I'm not sure this is really directed to you. I've got questions on our bond grading. So I don't know if this would be something for Dennis or... Here's my question, you guys can figure out who wants to answer this. Recently, our bond grading had, I don't know if the right word is, declined to a triple B-plus rating. And my question is, how does approving this special tax district bond affect our current rating? Will it improve or will it affect that in a negative way? I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
No, Dean Rogers, with Dumbo.
Thank you.
That's hard for me to say. So these bonds would not be rated going through SRF. They don't require a rating. So we won't find out anything new through this process. You know, having said that, your bond ratios, I'm sure, are part of that rating process, you know, if in the future, when they're doing their rating surveillance or if you try to get some bonds rated in the future, you know, they're always looking at bond ratios. So that is one aspect that would be impacted with having additional debt outstanding.
Okay. Through some of my notes, I see there was a comment from Jim McGough. I don't know if he's here or not, but he could probably help me. He said that one thing we could do, the city could refinance on an open market. Is that, any thoughts on that?
I think, yeah, I'll comment to that. I think that comment was directed at, there's been some concern, I think, about, you know, working with the SRF program and maybe some of the covenants and conditions that they require, and what would it take to sort of get out of those? And that would be a refinancing of all of the outstanding debt held by the SRF program. Unfortunately, the interest rate on those loans is very low. I can't remember, I think it was 2.9 probably when we did that. So going out and actually being effectively able to refinance it on the open market, you're just not going to find interest rates like that.
Okay. Good, thank you. Then my last question is, I'm assuming you guys know about the group that has helped us out, this Terre Haute competes, has done some studies on a variety of things. And I think they made a recommendation recently that the city wastewater treatment board look at possibly selling the wastewater treatment plant. And so my question on that is, if the city or wastewater treatment board, mayor, decides to look at selling this plant, how would approving this special tax district bond affect a potential sale in the future? Does it make it more appealing or less appealing?
Well, I'll take a stab at it as best I can. These improvements, whoever's going to be operating the utility is going to be under the same Clean Water Act guidelines and the same IDM rules, whether it's the city that owns and operates the utility or if it's a private company that owns and operates them. I think if a private company were to come in today and take over the system, they would take it subject to the agreed order and the improvements that need to be done. That would be part of the acquisition. So those improvements would need to be done. It would have to be factored in, I think, into what a purchase price of the utility would be, or whether it's a lease or what have you. be, would be, or whether it's a lease or what have you, but that would have to be factored in, um, as would, in part of that long-term control plan. So, if the city does the improvements now and then later on they look at doing something like that, I guess that helps out the negotiation side of the city from the standpoint of, hey, the systems, these improvements are done, they don't need to be done. But certainly whoever takes the utility takes it also with respect to the debt that the city has on the system. So, that has to be factored into anything.
Sure. Well, that makes sense, but you did say later on. So, would it be more appealing in two, two to four years and in turn sell these or sell the plant as opposed to immediately? All right, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, it's hard to say. I think it's all, I think it's all a function of whoever's looking to acquire the utility, what profitability they think that they're going to have. And part of that is looking at the customer base. I do know that, um, one of the things about the system is that there's property tax-supported debt that's funding some of the improvements. Um, so if a private utility takes it over, they won't be able to levy that tax. So, that will somehow have to be factored into the analysis of what the rates and charges are that, if you charge the customers.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Brown. I yield.
Councilman Nation?
I have a couple of questions too. A lot of what I was going to ask has been covered by other council members. Um, and I appreciate the, the document that we were given that helps. Uh, but I do have a couple of specific questions about pages within it. Just, uh, like the second page, which has the title, Terre Haute CSO LTCP implementation plan, breakdown of phases and estimated project costs. The numbers on it imply that this is a two thousand and eleven document, uh, the old one, right? Okay. Uh, because it has the low numbers that have all gone up. Uh, I did have a question about the, about a phase one number though. Uh, it's the, almost the second one from the bottom. IP ponds, liner inlet and outlet structures, six-point-three million dollars. And was this done?
No.
Okay, it was not done?
When the plan was, when this document was put together, we were still contemplating the open, um, EQ basins, basically reusing the IP ponds for storage of the combined sewage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's where these numbers came from. Um, these numbers were generated when that was still, um, being considered. So, no, those project, that was not done.
Do you know what we did with the six-point-two million dollars that was?
It went into the high-rate clarifier.
High-rate clarifier?
That, that was the, that was the solution to the, to the problem, was the high-rate clarification instead of the EQ basin storage.
Okay. Um, and the high-rate clarifier, I, I also availed myself of the opportunity to go and tour that and thanks for being there, Chuck, and thanks to Debbie too. And I, like, uh, Councilman Nasser, I saw the, uh, the, and Councilwoman McCrossan, I saw the big empty spaces inside that place and understand that that's for a next phase, this phase that we're talking about, right?
Right, that's correct.
Um, in our conversation, I don't think I see it reflected in the document, but in our conversation about that, you also talked about a third phase or a next, a third expansion. Can you talk a little?
There's a possibility that in the permitting process, that we may have to do another phase of HRC.
And that would be a phase that we don't have space under a roof floor already. We have not built that?
I don't think we have. Right.
And is that a, that, well, the second phase that we're contemplating now, this is not a warrant from IDM, this is a requirement, right?
Yes.
And if we were to do a third phase, that would also be a requirement, right?
Yes.
But that wouldn't happen until?
Phase three, probably.
Phase three, phase four?
Phase three.
Phase three. Um, going through the document a little bit more, there's a cover letter from Dean at Umba and then there are a number of documents that follow it. Um, the first one says, schedule of estimated project costs and funding, and it says, per the consulting engineer. Which consulting engineer is that? Is that HRC?
Uh, no, this was CHA.
CHA. And this is the firm that was chosen to do the design of phase two, right?
Right.
Okay.
Excuse me, interrupting. Uh, Mr. Nasser, the answer to your question is in the middle of that page.
This is the engineering fees?
Engineering fees.
That was what my question was going to be about. I see that the basis of design plus the final design together is about nine-point-one million dollars?
Yes.
And as I read this, that's about fifteen percent roughly of the construction, of the estimated construction costs. Um, ish.
Ish.
Um, and reference, going back to the, uh, HWC, Hannah Wagle and Klein, uh, letter earlier, they point out that ten million dollars is a lot, uh, or over ten million is a lot. This says nine-point-one. Uh, do you think this is?
Okay, I'm just going to interject that, um, the PER is not a requirement on the open market.
What's the PER?
Plenary Engineering Report.
Yep, yep.
That's additional engineering work that's required by the SRF, uh, before they'll loan us any money. So, that basis of design, some of the preliminary engineering stuff, we wouldn't have had to do, um, if we'd been out on the open market. So, we would have saved, we would have saved some money if we had done it that way.
Saved some money on design?
Yep.
Uh, but then spent that same money on interest presumably because we'd get a higher rate, it would be a higher rate.
Probably.
Um, as I go deeper into the document, I see that there are a number of tables, uh, and one of them is SRF Table Seven, selected plan cost summary, and it has engineering fees, basis of design, and final design listed too, and those together total eleven-point-one million dollars. So, one of my questions was, which is it? Is it nine-point-one or eleven-point-one?
These are just rules of thumb, kind of guides.
So, it's ten.
I know.
Uh, somewhere in the middle.
It's, yeah, yeah, these are guides.
And who, uh, I understand that Dean, uh, that Dean put together the, the September fourteenth dated stuff, which there are five or six pages of it. Uh, and then we shift into other documents that were apparently prepared for the SRF. And, uh, are those not Dean? This is, this is the ones that look like this, uh, that didn't have the?
Okay. Um, right, that was, those were the, I think, SRF Table Seven.
Yep, SRF Table Seven.
It's PER stuff, I don't know, I'm not sure where that came from.
Well, the?
That was, you know, initial, I mean, you see the engineering design fees. This is an SRF table, again, projected costs.
And I noticed or noted that now we're up to twenty percent of, uh, construction cost. Um, on this table, it's fifty-five-point-six million dollars for construction cost, eleven-point-one million dollars for, uh, engineering, basis of design and final design. So, that's a full twenty percent. Um, so we've gone from fifteen to twenty and, well, and we've got HWC saying that ten million dollars is too much.
Well, this, this was an, this is ten-point-three in the eight oh six were estimated numbers. Our actual numbers are back on that other chart.
Okay, so?
So, our, our actual number is eight-point-three.
Okay, uh, so it's, we should be looking at Dean's numbers then. Uh, I also noted, for what it's worth, that on the page prior to that, on Table Six, uh, we're, we've got basically collection and treatment. Uh, the two, the first two are collection and the second, and the third one is treatment. Uh, but then all the documentation up to this point also talks about two million dollars for green infrastructure projects. Can you tell us what green infrastructure projects might look like?
Um, as part of the long-term control plan, we did a study on our, ours, the biggest contributors to our combined system. Um, the basin that ISU is located on, um, is our, one of our biggest contributors. So, a part of the long-term control plan had this green infrastructure component added to it. Now, green infrastructure basically is a way using, let's say, more natural systems, um, greener systems to remove the water from getting in, to keep the water from getting into our combined system in the first place. There are a number of different types of projects that would qualify as green infrastructure, bio swales, um, actually, cisterns, uh, rain gardens, are all types of bios, of green infrastructure. Even as far as pervious pavement systems.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, paver, actually brick paver type, concrete pavers can be used as pervious green infrastructure. Actually, one of our biggest successes is the ISU baseball stadium parking lot. That is pervious asphalt and most people that wouldn't know if they were, you know, standing there looking at it, it's any different than any other parking lot. But as the rain hits that parking lot, it percolates through the parking lot and ground, goes into the ground instead of into the combined system. So, the two-million-dollar pi, is kind of a pilot program to look at alternatives and actually measure results. There's a, there's a design, construction and a monitoring, uh, component to that two million dollars.
That looks like?
And we're looking at, excuse me, we're looking at the ISU basin to, uh, to try those pilot program, try the pilot program.
And looking at, I guess it's an old document now, but, uh, the original concept of the five phases, uh, this two million dollars was in here for phase two and then for phase three, there's, uh, kind of an implementation.
Right.
And it goes up to like, if I remember correctly, like six million dollars or something.
Right.
Um, the reason I'm asking about all this is that, again, in these tables, uh, that look like they were prepared for the SRF funding, I don't see any mention of the two million dollars. Uh, we've got the conveyance system and the HRC phase two, but then nothing else. And the, you know, all these numbers are within a couple of million dollars of each other. So, I'm wondering if that's an oversight or if that's someplace else that, uh, that this gets funded from?
We did, we did actually, yeah, that would be nice. Um, we did have to amend the PER to include the green infrastructure. So, yes, it is in, it's in, it's in the numbers.
So, it's been a version that we don't have then, huh? Not the, not the version that we would give them. The, uh, this might be a question for Dean. Uh, I, when I look at the, again, the schedule of estimated project costs and funding, um, there are a couple of amortization schedules that were, um, provided and they're pretty straightforward except, uh, all the way at the bottom, there's the crippling balloon payment, um, on both scenarios. And I wonder if you could just, actually, it's one scenario, it's just repeated. Uh, so can you tell me about these payments that go from a hundred and eighty thousand to two-hundred thousand dollars-ish, up to three-point-one million dollars for the last couple of years? Is it, are, are these going to roll into another, be refinanced in another bond or what's the vision here?
Now, I mean, you've always got options when amortizing your debt of whether to amortize level or wrapping that amortization around your existing debt structure. And the advantage of wrapping is minimizing rate impact. So, a lot of communities try to utilize that wrapping structure so that when you look at your combined debt service, um, which is shown on page four, when you look at that debt service, you have as level of debt service as possible. So, that's what was utilized here in order, I know the rates were already adopted, but in order to minimize impact overall and not have a, a larger peak year of, of debt service than would otherwise be necessary.
I notice also from these, well, from the second page of amortization schedules, that you don't have a bond rolling off until 2030, it looks like. Is that correct?
Correct. The, and, and these are your revenue-supported bonds. So, you do have the, the sanitary district tax-supported bonds that, that do pay off, I think, January first, 2019.
Okay. Uh, thanks for that explanation. Um, Dean, you can also, I think I asked you this before, but, uh, just to continue to pound on it, uh, I see that on your pro forma annual revenue requirements and annual operating expenses, I'm sorry, annual op, operating revenues page, uh, the second one is payment in lieu of ta, of property taxes at four million dollars. Um, where'd you come up with that number?
From the current year budget.
Okay, so it's assumed that for however many years this is going to continue, that we're going to, that the city will continue to take four million dollars as pilot?
Sure, certainly that's going to be subject to annual, uh, decisions by the council.
Yeah. Um, Dean, on the same schedule, uh, as I go down, if there's a, there are a number of notes. Uh, note number six, uh, replacement and improvements, four-point-two million dollars. Uh, and then the, the explanation says to provide an allowance for replacements and improvements at a sufficient, at a level sufficient to provide for adequate bond coverage. I get that. It's the intent of the sanitary district to utilize any excess allowance that isn't needed for replacements and improvements for the repayment of the six-million-dollar ban, which mat, which matures on January first, 2021. It's anticipated that at least two million dollars will be available on each year from 2018 through 2020, which would result in full repayment of this ban. So, I think I understand from reading this, that two million dollars per year for the next three years will be set aside and then those six million dollars that we owe the county will be paid back before it becomes, before it matures, before it's due. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, do we still need to levy that same amount of money after, or after we've paid back the two million dollars per year? Uh, you know, this is programmed in for what you, what you, what I, what I understand is this is annual revenue requirements for the whole term of the rung and we're saying that we're going to collect four-point-two million dollars for replacements and improvements. Uh, first three years, we're putting it all towards the ban, but then after that, does it still need to be four-point-two million dollars a year?
Well, really, I mean, really, your only revenue requirements that would be locked in are, are your debt service and debt service reserve. I mean, your, your others are going to fluctuate, your annual operating expenses and so forth. So, you know, that's, again, every three to five years, let's evaluate rates. If, if three years from now, if we don't need to be generating the revenues that we're generating, we can always cha, we can always change the rates.
I also see two lines down from the, from this four-point-two-million-dollar number. There's a one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-dollar number that says ban payments. Uh, and it just says, as, by way of explanation, to provide an allowance for the interest on the 2016 bans. And my question's the same, do we need this long-term? I mean, is?
Now, once those bans are paid off, you would no longer have to pay that interest.
And that's a hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars that will not be required in revenue to keep this all shuffling forward, huh? Um, well, thanks, Dean. Uh, that helps. Um, back to the HWC document, Chuck. When, uh, when Councilman Nasser was asking his questions, I, I was following along on the HWC document and I had basically the same set of questions. He fleshed them out a little bit more than I would have. Uh, but I do see, but, but I, I heard you, I think accidentally changed the subject with the very first one, with force main flushing.
That, that would be part of the new force main.
The new parallel force main?
Right. We have no capacity, no capability. That would be an added feature to that.
And is that, I, I mean, what's the compelling reason for, for building a whole second force main? Is it to add this flushing capacity?
No, it's, it's the redundancy.
It's redundancy.
You only got, we only have one. It's been working well, but it is also constructed in nineteen sixty-two.
Can you characterize what a force main is?
Um, I, when I explain it to most people, I, I tell them it's, it's like a garden hose, okay? It's not, it's not like water just kind of like in your gutter flowing by gravity. There's a pump on the end of the force main and you're pushing water through it like a garden hose. Our garden hose in this case is forty-eight inches in diameter and it carries on a day like today about eleven, ten, eleven million gallons. So, it's a, you know, that's, that's what it is.
Okay. I, um, when I looked, when I was talking about this last time we discussed it and I was looking at the map, uh, my impression was that we would be, um, replacing the current force main with the new one that goes out to First Street, but it, but that old one will stay in, in service.
Right.
That's the redundancy we're talking about.
Right.
The work, right?
Right. So, that's what, that's essentially the question we're asking is, do we want to foot a brand-new main lift station and tie it to a fifty-year-old force main?
Yeah. And based on the HWC document and, uh, and then the, some of the other clarifications in CHA's document, uh, it, you know, it, it comes back to that want or need saying. And do you want to address that?
Well, in, well, you're going, going back to 2011, when HWC put these numbers together, they were estimating that when, when they're putting their estimate- they were estimating that, when, when they're putting their estimates together, they assumed that we would be reusing the existing force main.
The HWC document that we have in our packet is dated June of 2017.
Yes. We asked them in June last year to review CHA's cost estimates.
It's June of this year, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
But when they were, I'm sorry, the, the original number and the original estimate that HWC put together as part of the long-term control plan assumed that we would be tying onto the existing force main.
That makes sense, that they would assume that. Thank you for, for sharing the, this document with us that we got to see, meaning the estimated cost comparisons for the long-term control plan, phase two bond. As I look towards the bottom, I see cost factors, and new force main is listed at $4 million in the HWC document that we're talking about in June of this year. They estimate that it will be $5 million, new force main construction. The LTCP does not include replacement or supplementing the existing 48-inch force main to the wastewater treatment facility. While there is some obvious benefit in providing redundancy for the 48-inch force mains, the proposed plan of dual force mains from the new lift station to the headworks has an estimated cost of $5 million and could be considered nonessential given the budget concerns of the city. So, you know, we've got the same, like, estimate issue, is it four or is it five? I, I don't expect you to have an answer to that.
Well, we won't know until we bid it. Or actually, we won't know until we actually finish building it. I mean, that's, that's the downside to these estimates. They are, they are estimates. We don't know the final costs on any of this. You know, we went through, on the, on any of our projects, we have the engineer's estimate, we go out for bid, we get the contractor's, you know, offer, basically, to what he's going to build it for. And then through the, through the entire process, because you've got a year, year and a half worth of activity that's taking place, there are adds, there are deductions, and by, you know, by the time the contractor leaves and the project is finished, that's when we know exactly what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
Everything else is just an estimate.
How do we do with phase one? Engineers' estimates versus what it actually costs at the end?
I don't, I'd have to get those numbers for you. I know, based on the original component, that sheet you were looking at before, with, when we were estimating or planning on reusing the lagoons as an EQ basin, I know it cost more than that, more than that estimate, when we, by the time we were all done. But the other part about that, we had significant monies left over from the first phase of long-term control plan. And because of the constraints that are in those bond documents, we were able to use those proceeds to start the PER for this phase. So, you know, the money's not wasted. I mean, it's very, very specific to be used, as to what the SRF allows us in those preliminary engineering documents. We were able to use it for the next phase, and so we've kind of gotten this PER started, and we're starting in this phase. We've essentially run out of those funds for the first phase, but, you know. The other thing about the funding I wanted to bring up, a couple other points. What we're asked to vote on this month is kind of a maximum not to exceed number. We're going to come back to the council when the bids come in, and all the value engineering, force mains, screening, all those things are all flushed out, and we have a hard bid from a contractor. And we're going to come back with the exact number of what we're going to need. So this special ordinance that we're looking at right now, like I said, is a maximum not to exceed number. We're going to come back with the exact number next spring, summer, maybe, when we have the bids in for this project.
And if I could amend that comment. So I, I agree with, with what Chuck's saying, and, and an important part of that is, so why are we asking for approval now? Remember, we've got this set out in two pieces, revenue bonds and tax-supported bonds, and we've got authorization at this point and, and rates in place to go issue the revenue bonds. But we don't want to go to SRF and ask for SRF approval on those bonds unless we have approval for the entire project. So the revenue bond piece will be first, but, but it's, we think this is an important step in that approval process so that we can get you good, firm numbers. The, the first phase, that's going to pay for the engineering to get us to that point to hopefully, I understand a certain level of nervousness, being uncomfortable because we're, we're talking big ballpark numbers here. But certainly, by the time we're issuing those taxable bonds, we're going to have engineering complete, and we're going to have bids in hand. But in order to get there, we have to have this parameter bond ordinance approved in order to issue that first phase of revenue bonds.
Okay. Thanks, Dean. Chuck, I'm still looking at the HWC analysis, and Councilman Nasser got pretty far through it, but he didn't read this. It also appears that some of the design criteria was requested by the city. It's recommended that the city consider discussions with the consultant regarding the need for some of the design considerations included in, in an effort to reduce costs. As I look at your estimated cost comparison, comparative document, are there cost factors or things on this document that you intend to discuss with the consultant to try to reduce the cost? Or is, is what we see basically your position of what we need?
No, I, this is not my final position on any of these. This is an explanation for the differences in the costs. We fully intend on value engineering this project, and I fully expect the price will come down. The exact amount that the price will come down, I can't give you right now. But yeah, there's going to be lots of discussions on wants and needs.
One last question before I seat the floor here. As I look at all this stuff, it seems to me that, as a, you know, somebody who's interested in this and has struggled to understand it, and is looking for ways to value engineer it or ways to cut the cost, it looks to me like the redundant force main is a target. Do you agree? I mean, is that something that we, that we need or that we could design out or...
I can see why it's in there. Because if, if the force main that we have right now fails, or Debbie can paint you the exact picture of what that's going to look like, it'll be ugly. But yeah, that was certainly going to be one that is going to be subject to a lot of discussion. Yeah. So like I said, this is my attempt at an explanation for the cost differences. It's not a, I think we need all this stuff, kind of a response.
I noticed in one of the other documents that I've already gone past, that, that what we've chosen, quote unquote, is option 11B. That implies that there are at least 11 other options. If there was an 11A, there might be more, depending on if there were Bs and Cs with some of those other numbers. Do you know how many options were laid out in cafeteria style?
Gosh. Probably a dozen. I mean, everything from complete separation to complete containment and various levels of control in between.
And who chose 11B?
Well, it was chosen by committee. Obviously, our engineers at HWC were integral in that. IDIM had a seat at the table. We had several other engineering firms there. We had legal representation there. EPA kind of sat in on these discussions as well. It was agreed to by committee, is the best way I can describe it.
Everybody, thank you for indulging me and trying to...
If I may.
Get a little bit of clarity on this, especially Chuck and Dean, and keep going.
I'm sorry. Page two, for the, the table.
Is this the old table or the new table?
Well, this is the more accurate table.
Yeah, Dean's table, yep.
It's part of Dean's report. Down there, you've got the list of projects, green projects in there is $2 million. So it was, it is, the $2 million is included in the total package.
Oh, yeah, I saw it on this page. I just didn't see it on the stuff for the SRF, and I was wondering which one, which document matters.
I think this is the one that's more accurate.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
This is also the one that has the 15% fees, engineering fees as basis of design at $9.1 million total and the $63 million construction cost.
Right.
And, and you're saying that you think that number is accurate?
Yes. But that 8.3 is actually a combination of several factors, several subset, I mean, there's, that'll take us all the way through construction. There's construction engineering in there, and there's design in there. So their actual design fee is about, I'm not sure, it's five and a half, somewhere in that range.
Okay. Okay. So you've all been waiting for me to say this, but I yield.
Counselman Nasser.
Just a few quick questions, not getting into a lot of terms. What if you made the parameter of the not to exceed on the bond less? Do you think you'd have people bidding within that parameter? In other words, if you don't have 70, and you say it's 55?
55, 55 would be a real hard number to get to.
60.
We, are we negotiating?
Well, I mean, you're, you yourself have, have said here that some of this could be taken out, this, oh, this could be reduced or that. So what I'm saying is, if you make the parameter lower, will we still get people to bid that parameter?
Reduce it?
I would say that, that the parameter in the bond ordinance really doesn't have to, anything to do with the bidding on the project. So, you know, we always try to establish, we give parameters to Dennis for preparation of, of the legal documents. And when we do that, generally, we're taking what, what we have now, which is preliminary estimates, what are we, about 30% design right now? So 30% design, and we add 10, I forget what we added in this case, normally 10 to 15% on top of that. The purpose of that is, is, you know, I wouldn't expect that to happen in this case, but we've had cases in, in other years where you bid a project, and all of a sudden it's coming higher than estimates. And what we try to avoid is coming back to get additional approval. Let's, let's go through the more process to amend the bond ordinance. So what I'm, short answer is, that parameter in the bond ordinance isn't going to impact your bids on the project.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. Another question. Do you know, or can you find out, how many in the state are private versus city-owned utilities?
Do these guys work for municipal or either?
We might be able to get some information like that for you, and I think the, the best place to start would be the, the Anti-utility Regulatory Commission. I just know through practice, and then we do some work at the IURC, there aren't a lot of regulated municipal utilities, but there are a lot of regulated privately-owned utilities, and they do maintain lists of utilities. We could probably go out and ferret that out for you and give you some idea of how many privately-owned there are and how many municipal-owned.
And I would like, and if, if possible, I don't want, I don't want you spending weeks on this, but if we could find out comparing the city-owned compared to the private-owned, the rates to the, to the taxpayer.
That...
Compare us. I mean, you have to get each one. I'm not saying to do, you know, you're going to get an idea.
Yeah. And I think probably, Dean, what we'd want to do in your public, I think in authority, is just get more like comparable to, to, I mean, that list could be enormous, but...
I'm sure. And again, I'm not asking for each and every one, but some kind of an idea.
Sure.
Do you have, you want to...
Well, in addition to that, have we ever been approached as a purchase of our wastewater treatment?
That was my next question. Oh, sorry.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yes. That's a yes.
Okay. What I, I mean, we, we have, we have talked about selling the golf courses or privatizing the golf courses, and now we're talking possibly privatizing the wastewater. Have we had an effort, and Mr. Counselman Elliott just answered it, have we been approached or anyone interested in doing that?
I've heard that story as well. I haven't been involved in any of those discussions.
Okay. Wouldn't it be better to try now to get someone to be involved and try to see if anyone would be any company, or any corporation, company, utility would be interested in this than to wait until we vote on this bond?
Well, as Dean said earlier, I think regardless of who owns the plant, the owner is going to have to comply with the long-term control plan.
And I understand that, and they would understand that.
And, right. And I don't know that would, I don't know it would change the position, but, I mean...
I don't want to interrupt. I guess one thought I have off the top of my head is, the process of putting together some form of a document that you could put out there and try to solicit true value proposals from prospective purchasers, I don't think that's something that you're just going to put together overnight. I think it's going to take some time. And then proposers are going to want to take time to investigate the utility, understand its revenues, understand its debt, understand its obligations on the agreed order. But in the meantime, there, there is a timeframe to comply with the agreed order, and I think the concern would be taking a look at, is that process going to cause the city to fall behind in meeting the, the benchmarks for the agreed order? And if you go through that, and you don't get a proposal that, that works, and then you find yourself behind on the compliance plan, and not to mention that those people who would look to purchase the utility are going to take it subject to that agreed order. So I kind of view it that the improvements under the agreed order, they have their own fine line.
Either way.
Either way.
And my, that was my next question. What would be the last date that we really would need to really vote on this?
Oh, gosh.
Because I have a feeling it's not ready yet. This council's not ready to vote on it yet. So I, I'd just like to know what's the last date to...
Oh, goodness. We're talking about a design schedule for nine months, and our engineers are waiting, chomping at the bit to get started. I can get you that estimate. Excuse me, our last schedule has us bidding in May. Okay. So yeah, we're, we're kind of up against it.
If we approve the bond at the next meeting, which I have a strange feeling is not going to happen, but if we would, how long would it take to get the financing approved?
As Dean mentioned earlier, there's sort of two, two sets of financings here. The first financing, I think that we could get approved in a month or two, and, and those are the revenue bonds, it's the smaller component of the financing. And then frankly, the other financing would be something that we would get approved by SRF once the bids came in, and, you know, if we made sure that they were within the parameters and everything like that. But frankly, typically on SRF financings, once the bids are in hand, you can be in a position to close those bonds, frankly, within about a month.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Counselman Elliott. As you all understand, this council really struggled last summer and fall to approve new revenues for the wastewater utility to satisfy the debt service for a $37 million bond issue. And what I'm hearing today is you all were sitting there last fall, and you knew 37 million wasn't going to cut. You had meetings with SRF, and you had meetings internally, and you knew the ground was contaminated at least back to 2015, and you're going to have to build it on a different site. You have meetings that have all, all these parties to the table, except the party that has to approve the funding. And I just don't get it. I just can't understand that. Why it was late all... Why, it was late August, when all of a sudden I saw that, in the sanitary board minutes, $70 million of bonds, and nobody had said boo to anybody on this council about it. And, and now all of a sudden, we're under the gun to make a decision, but we could have been thinking about this much earlier than, than we were ever told. Now, the, the contamination, I got a tour of the existing lift facility the other day. So it was pretty obvious to me that right on top of the hill was West Contar's property. Now, with the experience we had at 13th and Holman, why nobody thought to test our property way back when, while West Contar was still in business for contamination, I also don't get that at all, to see if anything might have been happening to our asset. Now we're looking at millions of dollars more to move this plant to a different spot, and then we got a lot more piping and everything to, to put in the ground. I just, I just don't, I, I don't get that either, and I don't need a response to any of those today, I just want to be on the record, just having to save those. Chuck, is there anything you want to explain to us concerning the sheet you passed out today?
Well, you're looking at the two, the 20, excuse me, the two columns there, 2016 cost estimate, main lift station, these are the, the numbers we'd come to, you guys with last year, $42 million.
Is that 2016, or is that 2011 or '12?
It's the 2011 numbers with modifications that we gave you last year. So the total down there, $42 million, is different than the $79 million. And you can see the different numbers, the footnotes in there, the $44 million versus the $21 million is explained in footnote number one, and that's the breakdown of the $23 million difference. You have factors like inflation, size, depth, new forced mains, screening equipment, and additional HRC capacity. And then the other glaring difference between last year's numbers and this year's numbers is the soft costs, a $5 million that was estimated initially, and the $15 million, and then again footnote number two.
And that's where my percentages came from, and you asked me about the other day.
Okay. Anyway, and like I said, for the $15 million represents the soft costs estimated by the SRF. So, those are the breakdown of the numbers, and the breakdown of the differences between the two estimates.
Okay. On, on footnote one, I see an item for additional HRC capacity, $6 million. And then also in the 2017 estimate, I see HRC phase two, that's $6 million.
Right.
So did we double dip there, or is it going to be 12 million?
That's two and three. Two is there in, in the HRC phase two, and then additional capacity, there's a, there's a question mark on that one maybe, but there's another, that's for possible expansion of the HRC to something we hadn't conceived of.
So we're doing it now?
We might have to do it now.
Okay. The green infrastructure is at, is at Indiana State, I guess you, you had explained that. Now, size and depth, 5 million, is that a location change? Or is that change in the style of the plant, the plant layout, or what is that?
It's, it's, that 5 million is comprised, there are several pieces to that 5 million, it's the, the footprint of the building has gotten bigger, it has gotten deeper, so that's what that size and depth represents.
So that's a location change?
Okay, but it's also a change in the pump configurations as well.
Well, if we were over on the original site, would we have, how much of this 5 million would we have? The original site where you wanted, initially wanted to build?
There would be additional, if we changed the pump configuration, there'd still be additional depth, and there'd be additional size.
New forced main, we've had enough discussion about that, screening equipment. Now, what did you find out about the contamination?
When we were working on phase one, we had to put a forced main from the existing main lift station to the HRC facility, and during the excavation, they uncovered, it was, I think it was October of 15, maybe, Fall of 15.
All right. I've heard 2015 from seven, several different people, so I'm okay with that. We talked about Barnes and Thornburg, and some renegotiation?
Pardon?
Barnes and Thornburg, and some renegotiation of the LTP agreement?
We're meeting next week.
What type of modifications would you hope for?
What I hope for, yeah. I hope for a reduction in the number of projects that we have to do. I don't, I don't think that's going to happen, but somewhere in the negotiations, there's going to be the costs for the total long-term control plan, the projects that we have to do, and the time we have to do it in. So all those things, I assume are going to be on the table.
Okay. How, how often did your team meet, the project management team, talk about this?
In the preliminary engineering phase, or during the basis of design of work? Well, Andy, you want to give that one a shot?
Hi, Andy Scales with CHA Consulting. Through the basis of design and preliminary engineering, we met with the city on, I think, four official occasions to review different stages of, of our reviews, just look at different alternatives, talk through those costs, and then in addition to that, we probably had, you know, we were bi-weekly in conversations.
Did, did anybody on that team ever say, boy, council may not like this cost, total cost, Chuck, I mean, you know us?
Well, the, the preliminary engineering report was finished in May, is that right, Andy? That, that's, that's when we got the, that's when we got the news that the price had gone up. So, yeah.
So, then it was August where I thought about, about it, and now, you know, we're only three months after that, so I could theoretically twice as long to start trying to mellow and get comfortable with that. And I asked if we had an official finance team, and he said, no, we don't have an official finance team.
Here is our, an official finance team.
That might be a good idea to involve council and future finance team activities going forward. You also responded to one of my emails that the main lift station must be located adjacent to the existing main interceptor?
Yes.
How do you define adjacent?
Well, the farther away you get it, the more piping you're going to have to install to get.
So where does the main interceptor run?
You were out at the site the other day, it actually runs, you know, as you come down that road, it's, it's right there on the site, you drove over the top of it.
But which direction is it?
It's running north and south. It starts up here on Spruce Street, runs along the bank of the river, all the way down to the main lift station. And as all the sewage runs downhill to the west, essentially, is picked up by this main interceptor. Carried all the way to the main lift, and then it's pumped uphill from there to the treatment plant.
So the one the other way, and closer to the treatment plant, to try to wire and fill it and reduce this cost?
The main interceptor ends at the treatment, or at the main lift station, it ends right there, that's the end of the pipe.
It ends at the main, oh, okay. So it, so that was as close it could have possibly been to the treatment plant?
Right, so it's, you know.
I've got that. Okay, I did have phone conversation with HWC, and with Andy at CHA, got a lot of questions answered, a lot of those issues have already been discussed, so I'll, I'll not go into those again. Mr. Otten, do we, is there a requirement to, to repay accounting band when we get this next bond issue proceeds? Because there's, there's, there's something in the document that makes me, makes me wonder if it is or isn't.
No, we do not have to repeat, repay the band immediately, the band's due 20, 2021? 2021 is when it matures.
Okay, but it says, for the purpose of providing interim financing for the reimbursement of costs incurred by the sanitary district in connection with the construction, that decision of sewer works projects in the sanitary district, all in anticipation of the receipt by the sanitary district of the proceeds from the sale of the sanitary district revenue bond series 201.
Okay, I think what you might be referring to is the current act of the bond ordinance, or the bond resolution, the declaratory resolution, and those would be if the sanitary district issued band, bond anticipation notes for this project, then when we would go to issue bonds for the project, we would take those bands out with, with the bonds we're issuing for this project, but the bands that we issued to the county were, were under a different ordinance, a different authorization. So if the sanitary, four, four years from now, if the sanitary district hadn't paid those bands off with revenues, they'd be obligated to go out and issue bonds to pay those off.
I don't want to mention that because in conversation with the county auditor a few weeks ago, he's making, they get paid to issue these, so.
Okay.
Hope you're right, I trust.
Well, I, and you've heard from Dean, sort of the plan of finances to pay those off over time.
Well, and I also know, you know, you commented a couple months ago, that as a condition of approving these bonds, we could make a requirement that, of a repayment program to pay off that payment.
Certainly, yes, certainly.
And we have a $140,000 monthly payment now going to the debt service reserve account that ends the end of December of this year, and it's going to be my recommendation that we just write those checks to the county beginning in January instead, and not counting ourselves to all of a sudden save up $6 million and pay it at one time, for the, for the due date. Okay, thank you. Dean? We had a, we had a lot of emails back and forth about this, and one of the comments you made to me was, I mean, I understand we've got three potential sources of revenue to satisfy bond payments and expenses, and that's user fees, or sewage fees, stormwater fees, and property taxes. And you, you made the comment that you felt the fairest one for all parties involved was user fees?
Yeah, I mean, whether that's sewer, stormwater, wherever the case may be, but I, I guess I was referring to sewer fees, since that's the only ones in place at this point.
Okay, and you had indicated, you had told our community that, but apparently, you know, it wasn't any meeting I was at, it may have been pre my time on council, or it may have been in a meeting when council's not, nobody in council was present, but yet now we've got a huge property tax bond that's presented. So unlike, you know, nobody said that, that, nobody mentioned that in time to address the, the situation that we have here. So if we wanted to do sewer fees and just totally forget about the property tax bond, and property tax revenue at the sanitary system, is it, is it too late?
I mean, there would certainly be, need to be further rate adjustments to make that happen.
I understand, but if people are paying rates as opposed to property taxes, then theoretically it offsets, right?
Well, for some folks it will, for those that are above and beyond the caps, it wouldn't. I mean, they would, you know, oftentimes in, with tax caps these days, some folks may be well above that cap, and when tax rates go down, they may not pay any less.
Okay. So, does that mean that recommendation?
Well, it's a, I make the recommendation based on, based on this, and it's, it's not an easy recommendation politically, I know it's not popular politically, but you've got a lot of, a lot of customers out there that contribute to stormwater runoff that don't pay taxes. So in my view, what's a fair way to pay for stormwater combined sewer related improvements is through fees, because everybody's paying fees.
Okay. Phases three, four, and five, any idea where we're at on those, and what those are going to cost, Chuck, are we going to get big surprises, 50, 80% increases on those also?
We haven't, we haven't looked at those numbers.
I didn't, I didn't think that.
I mean, we're monitoring the system that we have right now, no, we don't, to get more solid numbers, more solid estimates, we have to go through design, least preliminary design, and we're not, we're not going to pay an engineer, and I'm sure CHA would love to, to do that work for us.
You aren't aware of anything yet, that, man, that would be?
Oh, we're, we're still, the next big project on the, is the parallel interceptor, another, another interceptor, that's, and we're discussing the, the actual size that that needs to be, so of course, that will, that component of that project will seriously affect the cost, so, no, we haven't, we haven't gone into design, or even preliminary design in the next phases.
Now, there's another redundancy that we, we had talked about, I think somebody had mentioned to me, there may also be a second, smaller line added?
I'm not familiar with that.
The use of the days, there's, on the normal days, a smaller line plus a larger line in addition to the larger line that we have, am I missing something there?
Oh, yeah, okay. So, I think we talked about this before, the parallel redundancy in the line is what we're, we're talking about here, and rather than put two large lines in, what we're looking at is possibly a 42 inch and a 24 inch, so you have a larger pipe and a smaller pipe. One of the things that's really difficult about this type of project, especially with combined sewers, is you have flows that you have, normal everyday flow, drive, what we call dry water flow, is days when, you know, it's not raining, it's just standard sanitary flow, so that flow is relatively low. And then we also have to accommodate the flows from rain events, because they're combined systems, you, you get a big rain event to come through, those flows come very high. And one of the things that we've had to design this system for is to accommodate that wide range of flows, because, as Chuck talked about, the, the forced mains, they're like gardeners, the size of those really helps limit and, and design the size of the flow. So, bigger the pipe, if you have the same flow rate through there, the velocity, how fast it's going to go is going to change, and so when we have low flows, if we have low flows and big pipes, the, the water's going to move very slowly through those pipes, and the sediment could fall out of that, out of that flow, and, and cause sedimentation and getting those pipes dirty, just like your, your arteries do with, with the.
So we currently have a 48?
There's currently out there now, as of today, a 148, yes.
So we got a 48, a 42, and a 24, is what we're contemplating now?
Well, that, we are contemplating replacing the 48 with a 42 and 24.
Replacing the 48 and shutting it down, or?
Yes, abandoning and shutting it down, yes. That's a possibility, that's, that's what we're looking at now.
And not, not use it at all? Then it's not redundant, it's not used?
The redundancy is in the two new pipes, the 42 and the 24, so you can run those two together at the same time, if you need to.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Now, in my private job, for many years, our firms audited a lot of contractors, and also worked with a lot of owners that, that built buildings. And I guess what normally happens in, in that environment is, you have an owner, and they do kind of have a budget, and they need to bring their construction in on budget, and they work with the architects, and the engineers, and the banks are going to finance it, and, you know, and work to do that. What I haven't seen here is, we don't have a budget. know, and work to do that. What I haven't seen here is we don't have a budget. And as a result, we've gone from 42 to 79, or, you know, or whatever. I kind of like George's idea of kind of setting a budget by setting a much lower number than the 70 million. If we approve the 70 million, does that mean we're stuck with that, or can we come back later and say, no, we didn't mean it, we only want to authorize so much, you know, once it's all bid it out and so on and so forth? I mean, are we done, this is our decision and we got to live with it?
Well, as they mentioned earlier, we're going to come back with the hard bids for the final number. So we'll know then.
So we have to approve the final amount of the bond issue?
The council can put whatever conditions they want on the approval. I think the key thing that we wanted to be able to demonstrate to the SRF program was that the will of the council was there to do the authorization for the special taxing district bonds before we went ahead with a $15 million revenue bond financing to do all the financing and sign the costs. That's kind of the catch 22 here. We didn't want to go do the revenue bond financing and then come back in the springtime, once bids were in, and come to the council, and then it'd be a surprise for you, or to have these discussions then and find out that it was never going to get approved. I think if you adopted the ordinance and you put a condition on it that, well, you need to come back with the bids and we need to approve the bids, that would be fine as well. I think that would be enough for the SRF program to feel comfortable.
Okay.
I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if that answered your question, Mr. Elliott.
It does, so we get a second chance then.
Yeah, if that's what the council desires, yeah.
Okay. And then, Dean, we had talked about trying to bump that 15 up and see if we could get to 20, because we thought we'd passed enough of a fee increase to get to 37.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay, and then that means that would lower the property tax rate and then lower the cap loss and help the general fund even a little bit more. Follow all that, right? Okay. All right, I yield.
Counsel, move the bond.
I had also read the Terre Haute compliance report that suggested, I guess, at least through my interpretation, that we open a dialogue into selling the wastewater plants. I know it was briefly, I'm a little confused as to the back and forth a little while back. Has there been any interest from private entities in...
I can answer that. I have heard from four companies since our report went out, and the most logical one, I did not hear from, but I did hear the other day from a third party that they have interest also.
So it's been pretty recent?
As early as last July, I think was the first one, and the other three were within a week after that article was in the paper.
Okay. It's my opinion, that's a discussion worthwhile, something we should maybe at some point talk about, something that might be, might be good for the city. I yield a little bit.
Mr. President?
Counsel, move the nation.
I sense that this is winding down, so I'm going to bring us full circle to the investigation of the wastewater treatment plant. I understand that the city's not in a position to speculate about what the FBI is doing or may or may not do, but our mayor has told us that there's an internal investigation going on. I wonder, my question is, when will we have the results of this internal investigation, and can we wrap that up as before we deal with this? Do we know who's investigating? Do we know what's happening on it? Will we have some kind of a report when the investigation is complete?
Counsel, A, filling City Attorney. I have been at the forefront of this since this came up in July, and I've been leading that internal investigation on behalf of the city and sanitary commission. Again, you're exactly right. I don't know that I'm in a position to comment on that at this time. One thing I will continue to state with regard to this issue is that while we'll continue to do what we can with our end and work closely with any outside agency that's investigating, at the end of the day, you have to look at who's best suited for an investigation like this, an outside agency whose job is to investigate versus an internal investigation that's there in an auxiliary role to help assist and gather any items that they may require, so.
Wait, so you've been working on it since July, and you're still trying to decide who is the right entity to do it?
No, that's not what I'm implying. We are all aware that there's an FBI investigation that's ongoing.
So is our investigation to wait for their results?
No. It's again, it's to work in concert with them as best we can to help, again, provide anything they may need in their investigation. But you have to look at it from the standpoint of who has the best tools to, you know, to go about doing that. Obviously, I don't have a team of investigators at the city, and we're not in a place that we can, where there's necessarily a requirement that we would go through the, some other process to hire some form of outside agency to come in and do that when you have a federal agency that is doing that currently.
You know, I wouldn't even be asking these questions had our mayor not stated that the city is doing an internal investigation. You understand that, right? So, you know, it begs the question, all right, so what's happening? When might we expect results? Are we, are they on a different timeline than whatever the FBI is doing or might do? And just speaking for myself, part of my heartburn over this whole situation is that I find myself not trusting the information that I'm getting from the administration for a variety of reasons, but not the least of which because of the ongoing investigations. I would think that the city would want, that the administration would want to do what they could to remove the cloud from this whole wastewater treatment plant situation, which now has overshadowed our long-term control plant too, unfortunately. And I, there's part of me that would like to see this all put off until after the next election, so that we could have an opportunity to change the players. And I say that just because in total frankness, I would like to see the players changed before I entrust, what is it, 40, 70, 75, $79 million of our money to the team that's gotten us into this mess with the FBI. I, to me, that's the elephant in the room, and it's something that I would hope that, I didn't realize you were spearheading the investigation, Eddie, but I would hope that you would do everything you could to remove as much of this cloud as possible so that the council can do our business.
If I may just briefly respond to that.
Please.
And I think Dean may be able to answer this a little bit better as well. If there is a concern at all with this council that somehow this bond money ends up in just an account that we can do whatever with, I hope, I want to make sure the council's fully aware of the restrictions that are placed on how that money gets distributed. And Dean, I don't know, this might be a good opportunity to briefly describe how the bond process works, or Chuck. You don't just get a blank check, and if there would be an allegation that that money would be used in a manner, which I'm supposing or suggesting could possibly be illegal, I think that would be quite difficult to do.
Well, especially with the SRF looking over our shoulder. I understand that, but I also reiterate that you've lost my trust, the administration has, and that makes my job a lot harder. Chuck, I welcome anything you want to say.
Let me just make one comment. I had passed out some information a couple of months ago, copies of state statute, and it's the fiscal body or legislating body that has investigating powers.
Absolutely.
Not the chief executive. So if we want an investigation, we have the right to ask for one under the law. And I guess maybe, you know, we ought to think about that if we're concerned about what may be going on. Or we at least have a right to know what the current status is, if we, I would think if we would have the authority to investigate.
And I guess I'm, that's the essence of my comments is that I'm waiting to find out the status on that. And I would point out that when the FBI rolled in, nobody from the council said, we're going to do an internal investigation of this. It was our mayor who did, not us. I'm not suggesting that the council do an investigation. I don't even know what that would look like. We're going to ask Eddie to do it? Are we going to beg the mayor for a legal budget so that we can hire someone to do it? All of those scenarios seem, since we zeroed out our legal budget for the council, I, all of those scenarios seem, well, seem not as good as finding out what the FBI actually came here for. And it's actually the specter of our mayor starting an internal investigation that has me asking these questions. I mean, I wouldn't even be bringing it up if it was just another FBI investigation that the community has absolutely no control over.
May I respond one more time to that, Counsel?
Sure.
Again, with all due respect, I think the council's asking the wrong person the question that you're wanting the answer to. The answers you want are from the FBI. They don't come knocking on my door, or the mayor's door, or these council members' doors saying, hey, guys, this is what we're here for, and this is what we're doing. They certainly don't tell me that either. Now, with me being in legal capacity, as a legal representative for the city, of course, I may be one of the first people that receives certain documents, and I am privy to the ability to gather information inside the city, because we generally in my office are the gateway for information. So again, I don't want, I do not want you to think that I'm sitting here with any piece of information that's the aha moment that I'm withholding from any of you, and I certainly haven't been given the specific reason why. Now, I can make my own assessment of the information that I've received, but again, at this time, we've not, we have no conclusive evidence that's been released by the FBI. And on that note, we will continue to look into any leads that may come up.
Have the files been returned?
They have not.
Okay. Chuck, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
If you like, I can give you the, maybe it'll put, you know, some of your concerns to rest, but the way the payment application process goes, we don't touch, we don't even touch the money. The money, if you're the contractor on this project, the main lift or the green infrastructure, you submit your payment applications for review to our office. It's just an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper asking, I need to get paid for this amount of work. We verify that you have performed that level of work, then we approve that, we send a payment voucher off to the SRF, they look at the same documents, they approve that payment application, PAYAP is what we call it, they review that PAYAP, send that payoff app off to the Bank of New York. The Bank of New York will send you the check if you're the contractor. We're not even, we don't, we're not the middleman anywhere in that, in that scenario. And like I said, our only review of the process is we're reviewing the payment application to make sure that the work in, that's reflected in the PAYAP has actually been performed, any materials that show up on the job site are inventoried and documented in those PAYAPs. So we don't even touch the money, and we aren't even, we aren't even a pass through for any of this money.
Confirming that the work was done, why, I'm sorry?
I don't mean to interrupt, but can I ask you, while we're on this subject here, who is "we" that goes over what work was done?
My inspectors.
That's it.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but while we were, right there. You have the floor, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say that, you know, you've verified that the work was done in the way that other units of government might verify that, like trees got cut down, or stones got ground, or something like that. I yield.
Counsel, move on.
And again, I apologize, Counsel, move the nation. But, you know, this is, this goes way back with me to a complaint that I've had through budget time and everything else. You know, here, we, you know, we as a body are the ones that have to vote for this and approve this money. You've had committees, I don't think anybody on this council, you know, we have different committees that we could have had a representation at these meetings to keep, you know, us in the loop of what's going on, and I feel like we've been in the dark. And here again, you know, we have, we that are approving different things of where the money's going, and we're just taking somebody's word as that that work was completed. So, I yield.
Eddie, to kind of go back to what you were discussing with the investigation, what's the status of the pay-for-play lawsuit?
Pending.
Okay. So there's more than one investigation going on, per se? You had the pay-for-play lawsuit as well as the FBI investigation, correct?
No.
So we have an FBI investigation on them, correct?
Yes.
And then we have a pending lawsuit for pay-for-play, correct?
There is a lawsuit that alleges pay-for-play, yes.
Okay, all right. And then to go back to your comment regarding if we've ever done anything inappropriately with those funds, Dean or Dennis Wayne, who can answer this? Have we gotten into trouble with the SRF in the past from misuse of those funds?
Not that I'm aware of.
Using the debt reserve?
The, the, the one issue that came up with SRF several years ago was some late payments on the monthly transfers. That has been the only issue, and that really didn't have to do with expenditure funds, it just had actually to do with those transfers not being, they were about two months late. Debt payment was never missed. I was told by Mr. McGough, they were routinely audit dispersment forms, so Chuck was mentioning that how this process works. I was exactly right, the money's not touched. A form is prepared, it's inspected by the city, it then goes to SRF. They have their own team that routinely use those forms and signs off on them, and they get routinely audited by EPA, so they'll pull those dispersment forms and send them into EPA as well.
Okay, so part of our reasoning for having to raise our rates last year was because we've done something to make the SRF maybe not trust us a little bit?
I think that that didn't help the situation out. I will certainly say that. And what that really did was, I think, shift their focus onto Terre Haute and take a look, a hard look at the coverage requirements and knowing what obligations were out there, including the long-term control plan.
Okay. So just to say that we didn't misappropriate funds, I think would be a little disingenuous, so. Somebody else have anything? Counsel, move on across.
I hesitate to do this, but I just want to make sure I understand it. This is going back before this discussion of investigations. And I think, Chuck, my question is probably for you. I'm sorry, am I going to just sit down? You're helping here if you stand up, link it up that way. On this additional HRC capacity at 6 million that you've got down here, that, I understood when you told me about that the other day, that that was something that was just kind of being chatted about by Idam and that...
of being chatted about by IDAM and that they might at some point in the future say, "We need to do that," and that that would be in the next phase if we did, not in this phase.
I think it is a part, it's, well.
It's $6 million, so I think it's enough to.
Give it a shot.
Spend some time straightening up.
The clarification, so there's two things that we're talking about. One would be a third phase of the high-rate clarification system. That we don't have a cost for, and that's not included in these. That would be at a future time. Because there's the possibility of that, we've had to enlarge the size of the facility to accommodate possible additions of pumps and services. So there will be space allocated within the facility for additional pumping and additional connections to a third phase that will be down the road. So what would happen, so let's say we decide not to do that, and we would have to do that in the future, there would be no accommodations made within the existing facility to move flow to that third phase of the high-rate clarification system.
So we're going to be spending $6 million on the off-tance that IDAM tells us we have to do that third one later?
That would be your clarification of off-tance? It's one of those things we can talk about through value engineering?
Well, it's just that what we have now is we had, we built a building with a house two phases of that. We put into one phase when we built the building. I was out there, and, you know, we all, and, but we built that building with extra space knowing we were going to have to build the second one. So that made sense to me. I have no problem with that, even though it was, I'm sure it was a lot of money to make that building twice as large, because we knew we had to do it the next round. But this one, we don't doubt that we have to do. And again, we're not a, you know, we're a community that is struggling in every single major institution with needs for taxpayer dollars to be spent. The city is, the county is, the school corporation is, and so for us to say to our community, "We're going to spend $6 million," and if we had a lot of money, I don't doubt that it might be worth it to do that right now. But we're a community that is not in that position. So that concerns me a great deal. Thank you, I appreciate your explanation of that. And the other thing I wanted to note, Chuck, and I think this, again, is a question, I'm not sure. Where the lift station is now is in the contaminated ground area, correct? And so we're moving that, my understanding is anyway, we're moving that over closer to the AHRC primarily because of that contamination. I know there's some other issues with it being lower land and all of that.
Right.
But, but we were not originally considering moving it over there until we found out about the contamination. It was kind of that thing that tipped the.
It helped make us, it helped us make that decision, yes.
Do we have to, do we as a city have a responsibility to decontaminate, I'm not sure what the technical word is, to decontaminate that property even if we don't build anything there?
We're working with IDAM right now on the cleanup of that site.
But we would have a responsibility to clean that one way or the other, or somebody else might have a responsibility to pay for it.
Our position is that we did not put that there, it was placed there by somebody else, and it's their responsibility to clean it up.
And I think that's a good position to have.
Right, so we're working, we're working through that.
I support that position. But it has to be cleaned up, is my.
It's in the floodplain. IDAM is very interested in cleaning it up.
Okay. So if we, would IDAM not allow us to build the main lift station there?
Oh, I suppose we could, but I don't.
Again, I'm just thinking about $5 million of increased expenditure in large part due to moving that over.
Well, it's, like I said, it's helped us make the decision to move it.
Okay.
Putting it on higher ground makes sense for access, for maintenance access and that sort of thing, too. The contamination, like I said, helped us make the decision when actually, when we were in Phase One, the connecting sewer from the main lift to the AHRC went right through the middle of that site because of the contamination, and we went around it. So, I mean, we've dealt with this already.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure you understood.
Councilman Morris, more time in.
Well, I keep going back to the contamination, and if we look at that property along the river, the past history of industry and factories that's been there, and the lack of, you know, regulations from generations ago. I'm not an engineer, but I would play the odds, there's contaminated soil from proxy to the prison.
Oh, yeah. Every time we turn a shovel, we find contaminated soil.
Yeah, so, you know, for this to be a surprise, I have a problem with, because I think wherever you put a shovel in, there's going to be contaminated soil. And then the other side of this is we're asked to be, you know, to approve a certain amount before the bids, and I trust everybody, but if I was given a limit, I'd undercut it, you know, 5% or what have you. I just have a hard time doing this before we know what it costs. How are you?
What else?
All right, thanks, guys. Needless to say, this first order of business was a little lengthy. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to knock the rest of these out, so we'll take a five-minute break. All right, thanks for the brief recess. Next order of business, Michelle, please.
General Ordinance 9, 2017, meaning City Code, Chapter 7, Article 3, Fire Prevention Code in Chapter 2, Article 9, Funds and Fiscal Procedures.
Station to speak on this, please.
Norm Line, Assistant Fire Chief in charge of Fire Prevention. This is Fire Ordinance Take Two. So nothing really has changed with this, except it's in the format that the state wants. The city attorney sent this to Mr. Goodell, who is the general counsel for the Department of Homeland Security. He reviewed it, sent it back to him after about eight weeks of reviewing. We did the changes he suggested. Some changes didn't occur because it's just the way we write our code. We've taken some things out, it's less restrictive in a couple of areas. The permits are all gone. We've reduced the amount of permits to, from 56 down to 21. They're not called permits, it's called registrations. There are some hazardous operations that we feel like we need to understand where those types of risks are located. Other than that, there's no changes. I'll be happy to answer questions, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 9, 2017? Council? Councilman Garrison?
Yeah, I, a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Norm, I know we've talked about this before, and I was not supportive of it in the past, probably won't be supportive of it going forward, but recently I've had a friend of mine pass in a residential fire. I don't know if it was in the city, and I don't really want to get into a lot of details, but it made me think about, you know, it seems like we're most susceptible to fatalities with fire when we're sleeping. And I got online and looked at that, and it seemed like there was some evidence that supported that. And as I read through the ordinance recently, I saw that we had pulled out, or someone had pulled out, the part about apartments, and I guess I'm, you know, if this ordinance is to help protect the public, I guess I'm questioning why that is pulled out and not put back in.
So the inspections that we do are for Class I structures. That's really what we're limited to as fire inspectors. So those Class I structures are those types of structures where we have public occupancy, that means any public person can go in there, and those places that are excluded are residences, whether they're duplexes or single-family residences. If it was an apartment complex, all we would be able to inspect would be the common area. So you'd have a 10-foot-by-10-foot opening with three or four doors coming off of it at a house down in Ferencin Grove, for example, and we would go in there and be able to inspect 10 feet. And so that, you know, for the time that we would put in, which may be 15, 20 minutes on a computer to find the owner, get the email address, check off those boxes for that 10-by-10 square, it really doesn't do us any service. It actually will cost more for the city for us to go and inspect those properties. Plus, I can tell you, we, I put, I came in this office in April of 2016, and what an eye-opening experience. We just, we don't have enough people that do the inspections. We have more businesses than we have people that are able to do those inspections, because the people that do the inspections also conduct all the investigations, and they conduct all the prevention programs. So we, those guys are working every day a lot harder than they ever thought they would when they took the job, and this job is a lot more tasking than I ever thought it would be. So I think the reason that apartments were removed was we can't inspect residential anyway. To include those, to be able to say, you know, in a college town, the amount of apartments that we have is overwhelming, and for us to go and do those, I just think that we would be so busy that it would not serve the city. You're right, most of the time, the places that are the most dangerous for us are the residence where people are sleeping, so why don't we looking at those? But really, we're supposed to keep the public as safe as possible. It's more like assume your own risk when you are in an apartment, so that's, that's kind of, and there was a big push, obviously, from the Apartment Association to try to come up with some type of a compromise, and I felt like this was a good compromise. It will, with a net, sweep through the community and gather all the Class I structures, which are those that have more than one employee or that is open to public access, except for apartments. So I see what you're saying, and I understand your concern, I just don't know without, you know, putting a lot more people in that division, how we could do it.
All right, thank you, Norm. I know you talked about that before, as you were talking about it, it sounded familiar, but, you know, since something recently touched me, I wanted to bring that back up. You know, I guess I'm a person or a council member that never met a fee or a tax that I'd liked, although I will say, I did like the edit tax, the economic development income tax when it came in. One, because we didn't have to vote on it, the county did, but two, I think that money was, you know, intended for economic development, and we were really falling behind compared to other cities. But then, a year, year and a half later, they changed it so they could be used for anything. So I no longer like that tax. But I like Norm, I think Norm knows that. We've served on the council together. I was against this originally, and, you know, I kind of asked myself, "How can I feel good about this either one way or the other?" And so what I thought I would do is make some phone calls to other communities to see what they do, which I often say when we look at things, "What's everybody else doing?" You know, when we did the Slade to Diesel, I don't know that that occurred, it would have been great if we really would have looked to see who else is doing it and was that successful. Well, in this case, I just wrote down some phone numbers, I got online and looked at Class II cities. When I was looking at Class II cities years ago, we had 20, 21, and what I found so far was 25, so I'm not going to say 100% these are all Class II, but I know the ones that I did talk to at least one time were. And Class II is based on pretty similar in size and makeup, and one of the things is that they, they don't elect their controller, but they're appointed, and we all have that in common. So what I did was I just went through alphabetically, and some of these are larger and some are smaller, out of 25, and I've got some quotes, I wanted to read through these if I could. And I guess what I, what I thought I would see is, I would make some phone calls until I heard, but here was my question. Do you, as a city, whatever city this is, do you folks charge a firefighter inspection fee to inspect businesses? And essentially, that's the question that I continue to ask everybody. And I thought I would call for a while until I heard three or four yeses, three or four nos, I figured it'd be about 50/50. But what I found out was, out of 25 phone calls, I had 13 responses, and all of them were nos. There was not a single city that said that they do this. I was pretty surprised to hear that. But the ones that I did talk to, and I started with the clerk's office because I thought, "Gosh, if you want to know something, Terre Haute, you call the clerk's office, and they'll know if a resolution's been passed or not, or in the process of being worked on." And some of them knew the answers, but most of them had diverted me to mayor's office, financial office, but about 70% were firefighter departments. And the ones that I talked to were Anderson, Indiana, and I'll read the population, too, because, you know, it's interesting to see, some are our size, some are much bigger, and some are even a little bit smaller. Anderson, Indiana, 55,000 people voted, or they said no. Bloomington went through the mayor's office and then diverted me to the fire chief. He said, "No, never," with, do they have that fee? Evansville, 119,000 was a no. Fort Wayne, 260,000 population, was a no. They made a comment I thought was interesting, and said that their firehouse is what they do is, they go out in their neighborhoods and they do their own inspections at no charge, but they do that so that their firefighters, when there is an incident, they're familiar with those structures. But you chuckled when I said, "Would you guys charge for that fee?" South Bend was 101,000, they were also a no. Carmel, and their quote was, "We do it yearly at no cost," they were no. Elkhart, Indiana, 52,000 population, they were no. Jeffersonville, 46,000, less than us, fire chief says no. Columbus, Indiana, firefighters, quote, "Firefighters are city employees, and that's part of our job." He was a no. And he said some of the others in that area are also, they don't charge. New Albany, fire chief says, "Nicipalities work for the public, and the public pays taxes for our service," so they were also a no. Michigan City, 31,000, much less than us, half of us. Her response was, "Doesn't think so." So that was the one that was an iffy no, but it was still a no. And then the last one was Greenwood, Indiana, 55,000. I don't believe this is, I don't believe this is, I don't believe there is a fee, it's just something we do. They were also a no. So I was surprised to hear that, but to me, it gave me, you know, something to stand on, this is not something I want to support. And again, this is not an attack at Norm and what he's trying to do, but I don't, I don't think, I just don't think it's something we want to do at this point. How are you? If anybody has any thoughts or questions.
Norm, I had a question regarding this. I've had quite a few phone calls from people regarding this fee, seen in the paper that we're going to be talking about it tonight, and a lot of people are thinking that we're doing another fee on top of what we voted on previously. What kind, and maybe Eddie needs to answer this, are we going to be in good shape at the state level if we approve this tonight, or are we going to maybe have to?
What was the question?
Are we going to, if we approve this, are we going to be back again to redo it, or is the state level going to approve it?
Nobleville took three years to get their ordinance passed.
Okay.
So I can't tell you what the state is going to do.
Okay.
I can tell you that the, there's a new chairman of the Indiana Fire and Building Commission, his name is Robin Nickerson, and he used to be a battalion chief for the Sheriff's Fire Department. He now works for Fishers as an operation chief. And so in speaking with him today, I have assurances that we will be treated fairly, and we will be given every opportunity to present our case. You know, when this was brought back to us, it was because, and only because, nothing in the ordinance is, are the people at the Fire and Building Commission against. It was, you know, you can run your city or community how you see fit. They just, because of their lack of staff, their commission is set up like the Area Planning Commission. They have a staff that reviews variances, and they have a staff that reviews ordinances and makes a presentation to the commission about the merit of those ordinance, or of those, of those items. Then the commission votes based on the way the staff, you know, obviously what it says. So the staff in the past few years, they went from nine members to one, whether through attrition, or through retirement, or just people moving on to other jobs, they have just, they have reduced their staff. So there was nobody. So, there was nobody that was reviewing any of these ordinances. So, they came up with a template to make it easier for them to understand, because they're not firefighters. There's architects and people from the state, there's, on there. So, the governor makes these appointments, and they don't know anything about fire service or fire protection, they don't know what a Knox box is or why it's so important, they can't understand why we want to look at the Class 1 structures, or why we would need a fee, or any of those things. And so, they came up with a template, so it would be easy for the staff that didn't do it, but for them to review it, so they could know that Section 102 was about this item, or Section 105 was about this item. And so, they could refer to it quickly and be able to get to the ordinances. We came at a time when that was just starting. So, as we're filing it, they're saying, do this ordinance. So, we took a shot. I was told on the phone that, quote, this won't be a big issue, it's nothing but a formality. If anybody deserves to have it passed, you guys do. Come on over, and we'll make sure that it gets done. And that just simply wasn't true. We went over there, and we were crucified. So, we did exactly what they said. We took everything that was in our ordinance that the council passed, and we put it into their template, and took out the things that they said were illegal, or unstatutorily possible, things that passed through legislature that we just didn't through our research realize, and put it in the template. But this time, Mr. Felling felt like it was a good idea not to bring it before you, because this was done in May, but decided to send it to them and say, you know, it is your job to tell us what you want. You know, mark through this and tell us where we are deficient. It's not our job to keep coming back and forth. And they just seemed like it was okay, well, it took me three years, so it should take you three. And I thought, that's crazy, I'm not, I'm going to be retired by then, I'm not going to be going back and forth between my council, or what a bad situation this is, where you have to have it approved by the local legislature before you can even take it over there. I mean, let's take it over there first, see what they want, and then we can have you guys approve it. Well, that was, you can't get on their agenda until it's approved by you guys. So, their attorney looked at it, sent it back with very, very little changes, a word here, a phrase there, and, you know, attorneys, they all have opinions. And so, we did exactly what he said in changing these things. And so, now, I think that, I hope, that with the new leadership on the Fire and Building Commission, with understanding of some fire background that, you know, Chief Nickerson has, and the fact that we went to Mr. Goodell and had this approved, that I can't say that it won't come back, but, you know.
The reason why I ask that, and, you know, I've had this conversation, I just don't want people to think this is an additional fee on top of what we approved earlier on.
Yeah.
And I think each time it comes before the council, people are going to think that's an additional fee that we've already passed.
Yeah, and that's unfortunate, the media bites on this as news, because really, it's old news. There's nothing that's changed in this, except we've actually reduced the fees. We got rid of permits, we don't have those, we have registrations, and instead for 56 different operations, they're only for 21. The other fees are still there, that was approved by the council, 25 bucks, and it graduates up as this square footage gets bigger. But we simply have done everything we can to keep it the same. It's not an additional fee, other than what the council passed before. It doesn't affect residences at all, it only affects Class 1 structures, which are primarily businesses. Yeah, I, we've done our due diligence, I think.
All right. What else?
Did you want to say something?
No, we've done everything we can at this point, prior to getting this before the council, and if it's passed, you know, there's always a possibility. Unfortunately, the way they have it set up, they won't give us a stamp of approval until it's passed by the council and goes before them. But Department of Homeland Security's had our newest version, as Captain Laramo said, for over two months, and they sent us their revisions, and we've done everything we can to get it as close to what they want as possible.
All right, thank you. What else?
Just one quick question. Go over again, what exactly will the fee be used for?
Okay, so, Ed, I think it's the last page.
I don't have it in front of me, it's what I'm asking.
Okay, so, part of the ordinance that wasn't in their template was the fact that Mr. Felling put in there about a non-reverting fund, setting up that fund, and then, of course, what the money will be used for. The money will be used for only supporting the operations of our division, which is all four inspections, the software that we use on our computers, the computers themselves, anything that has to do with inspections. We want to buy a tester for smoke alarms. So, we walk into a business, it's got a canister that puts out fake smoke, but sets the alarm off to make sure the alarms are working, $2,500. We don't, we don't have it. So, we can't test smoke alarms. So, in a business, we can pull the pole stations, but we can't test the alarms, unless we get up there with a piece of paper, which we've done before, and a ladder, and made real smoke. So, that's, you know, and that same device also has a heat sensor. Some buildings have, instead of smoke alarms, they have heat sensors, so if the temperature gets too high, then the alarm goes off, the sprinkler system goes off. So, how do you test those? Blow dryer, you know, you've got to find some way to raise the temperature hot enough to make it go off. Or they have the cups that raise that temperature to make that alarm go off, so we can test it. We don't have that ability. So, things that we would purchase with this would be obviously stuff like that. And then, of course, the other part of my job is prevention. So, this year, we were in contact with close to 8,000 children, both in the school corporation and in daycares in our community, teaching things like stop, drop, and roll, dial 911, stay low and go, not playing with matches, you know, things like that. And so, that money would support that. The fire helmets, the videos, the sparky costumes, $2,500. You know, those things are what cost us money. Now, we don't have to provide those programs, and there's no requirement, but there's an absolute correlation between children that learn not to play with matches and children dying by accidental fires. So, we want to make sure we educate and re-educate and drive that point home over and over and over again. And other communities are doing the same thing. You know, Lafayette, through charges for their inspections, has a week-long course that I would like to get into next year, where the school corporation goes to a school, and then we go there for one week, and we get every grade of the elementary schools all, you know, throughout that week. So, it's a fire prevention week, instead of what we do, which lasts really a whole month and a half. And the last thing we do is, of course, investigations. And I can't tell you how much we spend on that. From crime scene tape to rubber gloves, that every time we dig out an arson, we have to use a different tool, because that tool is now contaminated, so it becomes part of evidence, you know, to the paint buckets that we put the evidence in. Those used to be free from MAB paints, because they were here. Now, MAB's closed, so we have to buy those evidence containers. So, bull proof vests for people to go out and make an arson arrest, we still like to, we're as important to protect our workers as the police department does, so we, you know, those aren't free. And so, we have to find revenue to, you know, to buy those things. So, between the three jobs that we do, the inspections, prevention, and investigations, and with the reduction of the revenue that's coming into the city, which I know that you're all well aware of, we just don't have the money. And so, that's what we're trying to do, is to find innovative ways, try to raise revenue to support the programs we think are important.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
General Ordinance 10, 2017, amending Chapter 9, Article 8, construction site and post-construction site storm water control.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Good evening, Council. Marcus Meyer with the Terre Haute Department of Engineering. This ordinance is something that came from an audit of our storm water quality control programs with IEDM. Our original ordinance was turned in, submitted, and approved to them, passed at one audit. They asked for some additional storm water quality controls, and essentially, what we're looking at is something they've started enforcing more, rules have been there, but they didn't look at, we're looking at providing storm water quality for post-construction for private development. It also applies to public development. Essentially, any development over an acre or hotspot developments such as gas stations or industry would be required to install controls to remove pollutants from storm water before it soaks into the ground or goes in the river or stream. And, I mean, that's pretty much suggested that there's no additional fees, no additional permitting, it's an approval that you would have to get before you get a building permit to build your building. But there would be an incremental amount of site plan review. We're arguing site plans, we're just going to look for a couple more things to check off. And it does introduce the need for inspection of post-construction storm water, storm water quality features on sites.
Counsel, if I may add one thing. IEDM requires us to have incremental review of our, this portion of our city ordinance. I just want to make you all aware, again, these are relatively minor changes. We will have sometime here in the near future, yet another change that will be added to this as well. And as the years go on, it's very possible, and I can guarantee that we'll have future updates to this part of the ordinance as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that note. Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 10, 2017? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papua Street. Finally, I can talk about something I know something about. Jesus, this is, I've got nine meetings, and this is the first time I'm really an expert. Damn. Speaking well for you guys, though, I'll tell you right now. Based on what I heard you say, I got a question about, no matter whether the fee is a dollar or $1,000 or $10,000, I didn't know that we were really good at picking up water and telling what's in the storm water.
Mr. Hyde, if you can address the council instead of the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry. I'll address you then.
Thank you.
You need to make sure that when you put this fee together, that it's possible to come up with a way to identify what's in the water, and how they're going to do it. And he said, and again, I'm quoting him, it would be a single house or a single acre, all the way up to do an ISU. Now, the bigger the area is, there's more contaminations, and it would be different contaminations around different parts of the thing. So, what are we measuring, and what's going to be no, or we can't have this, or you've got to take this out? There's a lot to go into it when you talk about water pollution, that's all I'm saying. And you need to really think about that before you make any rule.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 10? Counsel? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 8, 2017, $22,762, amended number 0404 to demolition safe buildings number 432018.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
I'm Dean Branton, I'm representing the Department of Redevelopment. We have five items here that are, represent the same situation. Number 8, 11, 12, 14, and 15, all represent monies that we have spent out of edit funds for demolition of substandard structures, and these are amounts that we've managed to collect from the owners. We're asking that this money be returned to the, to our edit demolition budget, as you have done frequently in the past. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak on Appropriation 8, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Counselor Nation?
Dean, thanks for staying up late to come and address the council about this.
Steve owes you a dinner.
Yeah, I don't think that you've been tasked with doing this before, but we've all done this a number of times.
Yes.
And we appreciate your work and what you do for the city. I would ask my fellow council members that, whatever questions you might have, let's ask them now, so that Dean can leave after this one, and I have to stay for the next four. And that would, on that note, I'll yield. This is usually business, a pretty straightforward, easy transaction.
I might explain on two of these that are rather large amounts. One of them was an emergency demolition we did on a house that was a fire caused by lightning, and it had transite siding, which added considerably to the cost. And the other large one down here was also a two-story house, full attic with transite siding. And this is kind of unusual for us to collect five of them here coming in at one time, but we're happy to take any money we can get from the owners.
Sometimes we've had two, but I don't remember having five at the same time.
I don't remember ever getting five in a short period of time.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, thanks, Dean. Next order of business.
Appropriation 9, 2017, $17,375.06 from general fund 0101 to police repair supplies from report D3015 for $10,000, and to vehicle repair and maintenance from report 437030 for $7,375.06.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
President, I ask our members of council, John Plast, Chief of Police. What this is, is two insurance companies reimburse us for damage to our vehicles in accidents, and Drug Task Force reimburses us for bills for our members in Drug Task Force. So, this goes into another account, we're just trying to transfer it back into our accounts, so it can be easier at the end of the year.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 9, 2017? Counsel? Thanks, Chief, for waiting. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 10, 2017, $96,622.06 from general fund 0101 to police overtime number 412129.
Petitioner to speak on this?
John Plast, again, Chief of Police. We pay out overtime for our members on the U.S. Council's Task Force and the FBI Task Force, and Operation Call Over, and Prosecutor's Office also reimburses us for certain projects. So, these payments come back in, and we're just trying to put back in overtime time to make our balance zero at the end of the year.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 10, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 11, 2017, $4,640 from edit number 0404 to demolition safe buildings number 432018.
Anyone from the public like to speak on Appropriation 11, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 12, 2017, $30,208 from edit number 0404 to demolition safe buildings number 432018.
Anyone from the public like to speak on Appropriation 12, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 13, 2017, $20,603.04 from general fund number 0101 to EPD part-time employees number 412105 for $6,000, to overtime number 412129 for $4,000, to operating supplies number 422005 for $4,000, to gasoline number 422010 for $3,373, to replaced supplies number 423015 for $2,000, and services contractual number 432010 for $1,230.43.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
John Plast, Chief of Police. These are edit funds that are reimbursing us for our patrol efforts, and we're putting them back into the EPD funds.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 13, 2017? Counsel? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 14, 2017, $2,129 from edit number 0404 to demolition safe buildings number 432018.
Anyone from the public like to speak on Appropriation 14, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 15, 2017, $1,700 from edit number 0404 to demolition safe buildings number 432018.
Anyone from the public like to speak on Appropriation 15, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 16, 2017, $315,000 from rainy day fund number 0200 to police pension fund number 391021.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Les Leal, Assistant Controller. I've got a sheet here I'm going to pass out to you. I have the next eight items on the agenda, so I'll kind of do a brief overview here, and once you all get the page, okay? This is the 1782 Budget Reduction Plan that we worked on, and we discussed with the State Board of Accounts and the DLGF. If you'll look at the top... If you look at the top, there were four budgets that were decreased, the General Fund, the Parks Fund, Police Pension, and Transit. And Transit isn't on there, but I'll get to that one in a minute. Thanks. So the first line, and I've got three columns there for the three funds I'm going to discuss right now, is the first line is the council-approved budget, that's what you approved last year for the 2017 budget. The 1782 notice came back with the amounts right under there. The variance to be funded per fund is the difference. And then underneath that is the Deficit Reduction Plan that we discussed with the DLGF and the State Board of Accounts. And explains each fund and what we had discussed to do. And then at the bottom, it says the Deficit Reduction Plan Details, and those are the transfers or the appropriations that we're doing tonight, and I've got them listed in the parentheses. And then they total the difference, the budget deficit reduction at the top. If you look at the net remaining, I'm kind of skipping all around here, trying to get through it quickly, but slow me down if you like, right in the middle of the page, says that each one of those should have a positive balance at the end of the year. Appropriation 16 has to do with the Police Pension Fund, and this is to move $315,000 from the Rainy Day Fund into the Police Pension Fund. And that is appropriation number 16, you see transfers from the Rainy Day Fund. So I don't know if you want to go through appropriation, or do you want me to go through the sheet? I'll do it however you like. Does he have questions about that one, I guess?
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 16, 2017? Counsel? I think we'll just go each one, so.
We'll do that.
Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 17, 2017, $445,000.00 from Transit, number 0621, to Operating Supplies, number 422005, for $45,000, to Gasoline, number 422010, for $75,000, to Diesel Field, number 422020, for $65,000, to Repair Supplies, number 423015, for $60,000, to Workers' Comp, number 435010, for $35,000, to Principal Motors, number 439178, for $105,000, to Purchase of Equipment, number 444010, for $5,000, to Capital Maintenance, number 444135, for $55,000.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. And for the Transit Fund, the revenue was actually reduced by the DLGF, and it wasn't correct. So once we show them the correct amount of revenue that we had, there are plenty of funds to appropriate the budget where it needs to be. So appropriation 17 is just re-appropriating those funds back into the budget.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 17, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Elliott?
I'm not sure I understand what you're suggesting.
The, when the DLGF reviews the budget, they look at our cash balance, our expected revenue, our new budget, and then expected cash balance at the end, and we have to have a positive balance. For some reason, our revenue numbers were off, and our revenue actually came in better, I guess, than we projected. Sometimes with the transit, the way the grants come in, sometimes they come in later, so we may get five grants in one year rather than four.
Did they cut our budget?
So they did cut our budget, so they reduced the budget down, but we have enough revenue already in there, so I don't need to do any additional transfers or anything. But there's enough cash balance that I can just re-appropriate those line items to where the budget should be. Does that make sense? Okay.
Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 18, 2017, $36,515.00 from Rainy Day Fund, number 0200, to Parks and Recreation Fund, number 391020, I'm sorry, 021.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. And appropriation 18 is to transfer the remainder balance in the Rainy Day Fund into the Parks and Rec Fund.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 18, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 19, 2017, $89,000 from Parks Non-Reverting Project Fund, number 0742, to Improvements, number 4430200, for $5,000, to Purchase of Equipment, number 444010, for $15,000, to Purchase of Equipment, Office Equipment, number 444040, for $1,000, to Purchase of Playground Equipment, number 444060, for $20,000, and to Principal Motors, number 439178, for $48,000.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. Appropriation 19 is to appropriate funds in the Parks Non-Reverting Fund, that we can reduce the Parks General Fund by, and these expenditures are allowed per the city code in the Parks Non-Reverting Fund.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 19, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 20, 2017, $1,114,500.00 from EMS Fund, number 0270, to Firefighter, number 412010, for $1,000,000, to Longevity, number 412090, for $100,000, and to Medicare, number 413020, for $14,500.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. Appropriation number 20 is to appropriate funds into the EMS Fund. We're moving expenditures from the General Fire Department into the EMS Fund. This is for the employees that work on the ambulances.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 20, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 21, 2017, $150,000.00 from CCD Fund, number 0402, to Services Contractual, number 432010.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. This is to appropriate an additional $150,000 in the CCD Fund that we are going to remove from the General Fund.
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 21, 2017? Please state your name and address for the record.
Donald Hyde. I have one question. What is it?
What are you talking about spending?
She gives out three initials. That means nothing to me, and I don't think it really makes anybody else in the general public sense.
Could you, my father tells me the same thing, so could you tell what those initials mean?
CCD stands for the Camu... I'm tired. Kim...
Capital Development.
Capital Development Fund. And that fund can be, by state statute, can be spent on any appropriate expenditure that the city has.
All right. Thank you. Counsel? Next order of business, Michelle, please.
Appropriation 22, 2017, $2,273,000.00 from Edit number 0404, to Special Events, number 432025, for $69,000, to Services Contractual, number 432010, for $1,193,000, to Operating Supplies, number 422005, for $376,000, and to Utilities, number 436000, for $635,000.
Petitioners, to speak on this, please.
Mr. President, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. Appropriation number 22, as you can see down at the bottom of the sheet, is to appropriate funds into what Michelle said, from the Parks Fund and the General Fund.
Anyone from the public, speak on Appropriation 22, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Elliott?
Leslie, on your spreadsheet?
Yes.
I see a $2,051 and a $222.
I was gonna say the same thing.
That must be the $2,273. But on the appropriation, which one is the 222? What makes up the 222?
Just a moment. Let me pull that up. Just a moment. Pull that up here. Is that appropriation 22? Is that where we are? Yep. Okay. The 222, as it shows, is the Parks Fund. That would be, okay, Services Contractual, if you look at the appropriation form. We have 69, we have from the Edit Fund, and then to Special Events, Parks, but that's, the $69,000 is for Parks, and Services Contractual, part of that 1.193 million, part is General Fund, part is Parks Fund that we're moving. $153,000 of that is for the Parks Fund of the 1.193. So if you add the 153 and the 69, that should give you the 222. And then the other part, the $1,040,000, is for General Fund. Operating Supplies, $376, General Fund. Utilities, $635, General Fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 23, 2017, $5 million from General Fund, number 0101, to Patrolman, number 412058, for $2,981,696, to Employer Police Retirement, number 413080, for $1,750,000, and to Employer Group Health, number 413030, for $268,304.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. This is to re-appropriate the funds, $5 million that was reduced by the DLGF and into the Police Department line items.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 23, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Elliott?
Do we already extend the loan?
No. That is on tonight's agenda. The redevelopment loan, the $5 million? Yes, that's on tonight's agenda. I think it's the last item.
Thanks. Next order of business, please.
Special summons 53, 2017, rezoning of property located at 1631 Lafayette Avenue. Favorable recommendation from area planning with conditions.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowry, and tonight I'm here representing AKL Investments. They're petitioning to request their property located on Lafayette to be rezoned from R1 to C2. The purpose of this is for construction of a convenience store. One of the requirements of area plan was to get a variance, which was approved yesterday by the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 53, 2017? Counsel? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Special summons 54, 2017, vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located between 1255 Locust Street to the east, and 1217 Locust Street to the west. No problems were noted.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm of Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowry, and tonight I'm here representing petitioner. They're the owners of the property on both sides of this alley. They're here tonight requesting that to be vacated, and eventually you're going to hear that they'd like it to be rezoned, along with both pieces of property that surround that alley. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 54, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Special summons 55, 2017, rezoning of property located at 1217 Locust Street and a portion of a vacated alley east of 1217 Locust Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 55, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Special summons 56, 2017, vacating an east-west public alley located south of 2800 South 13th and Half Street. No problems were noted.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, Landmark Properties. As you may recall, I was here last month, they own property south of On Wheeler. This is a similar deal to that, it's kind of a cleanup. They're also asking for the alley to be vacated, to allow for buying of the lots, and hopefully create an environment for some commercial development. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 56, 2017? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Again, Donald Hyde. Again, common sense is what I'm asking the board. Everybody in this room, everybody in this town knows that the trash is picked up going down the alleys. And you keep knocking off the alleys, I've got to hope that there's no homes where they need to pick up the trash, or has that been taken care of? I could ask them that question.
Can you address that?
Yes, Mr. President. Part of the process of going through an alley vacate is the city does a review, each department a city, and that's one of the issues they look at. And we've received no issues with any of the department heads, nor have we received any complaints from the neighbors. This particular alley on Wheeler is a dead end into Third Street, it's not used by anyone. And the owner of the, the only people affected by the closure of this alley is the same owner on both, on both sides of the alley. So there's really no issues with this particular alley vacate.
Thank you. Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Special summons 57, 2017, rezoning of property located at 1340 and 1344 Wheeler Avenue and 2919 South 14th Street, and a vacated alley south of 2800 South 13th and Half.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing petitioner, Landmark Properties Development LLC. They're the owner of this property, and they have bought both sides of this alley. They're asking the non-alley portion that is currently R1 to be rezoned to C2.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 57, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Special summons 58, 2017, rezoning of property located at 1255 Locust Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing AKL Investments. They're requesting that this property that's currently zoned C2 to be zoned to C1 to match the vacated alley and the lot next door. Part of this purpose was under a C2, it required substantial buffering, that's not required under C1. There will be buffering, but not the distance that is required under C2. So that's why they're requesting to be rezoned to a C1. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 58, 2017? Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, Michelle.
Resolution 22, 2017, approving the amendment of the Fort Harrison Business Park Economic Development Area.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of council, my name is Lou Britton. I'm here representing the Redevelopment Commission. Steve, Steve Witt's out of town and couldn't be here this evening. I do, before I forget, I want to thank Michelle for getting us on the agenda. We were a little bit late in getting filed, and she worked with us to do that. It was important to get this on the agenda, because there's a whole sequence of events that has to occur in order for us to proceed with the last step in the Pyrolex project. If you may recall, Pyrolex is creating 55 new $19 an hour jobs, and has a $25 million project going at the Fort Harrison Business Park. You had previously approved economic development revenue bonds for this project and an abatement. The last step is TIF financing for a rail spur extension onto the property. They need the spur in order to get their raw material onto the site. The cost of that project is about $1.7 million. The Redevelopment Commission is proposing to issue revenue bonds. There will be a bond ordinance which will come before you next month, assuming that this resolution is approved this month. The purpose of this resolution is to authorize the amendment of the Economic Development Plan for the Fort Harrison Business Park to allow for expenditures of monies for rail extensions, and to designate Pyrolex as a designated taxpayer. By designating them as a designated taxpayer, that will enable the Redevelopment Commission to capture the increase in taxes on personal property, not just real property. When you designate a TIF area, you only capture increased AV on real property improvements, unless you designate a specific taxpayer on whom you're going to capture. unless you designate a specific taxpayer on whom you're going to capture personal property taxes. So they need to amend the plan. In order to amend the plan, they have to go through the process of adopting a resolution by the Redevelopment Commission, adopting a resolution by the Plan Commission, that was done last night, they approved it, having a resolution adopted by the City Council, preparing a financial impact statement and submitting that to all the taxing units, and then the Redevelopment Commission has to conduct a public hearing after ten days' notice. This step will allow us to continue that process so that by mid-December, they will be able to close on the bonds. They have actually already started moving dirt for the main part of their project, not for the rail part, but for the, for the building itself. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If I can't, Jeff Lind is here representing Pyrolex.
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 22, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Nation?
Lou, I don't remember the details, but I remember from a recent report from the Redevelopment Commission on TIF districts that there's not a lot of money flowing through this particular TIF district. Is that correct?
The, I think when Steve was here before on one of the two earlier, I don't remember was the EDC, I think it was the EDC bond, he explained that they did have approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that TIF fund. That is going to be, but that he couldn't use that for anything because he thought he was going to need it for another project. It is this project for which he needed that money. So once that money is expended in relation to the rail project, they will, they will not have any more cash on hand in that TIF district. Well, no significant cash on hand. We're not probably not going to spend our last buffalo, but.
Right, yeah, I realize that in this atmosphere, we're basically spending the pots down to almost empty. And this one was already almost empty. Thanks, Ayil.
Lou, I had a question regarding that rail expansion. That wouldn't be primarily just used for Pyrolex if we had another industry come in and they'd be able to utilize it as well?
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that because I also forgot to mention, part of this, as a part of this rail project, they'll also be making grade-crossing improvements to Steelton Road where the railroad crosses the grade there. So it will have a, it will have an immediate impact on the general public as well, not just the rail for Pyrolex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You lawyers must enjoy getting paid by the hour for a night like this.
You can't have any more time than this. But I can only judge for like five minutes.
Next order of business, please.
Resolution 23, 2017, authorizing the extension of a temporary revolving loan from the Redevelopment Commission.
Counsel, Eddie Fellings, City Attorney. I'm paid with a salary, unfortunately. You're more than welcome to change that if you'd like. Say the best for last, counsel, you've all seen this, or something very, very similar to this resolution, it's before you denied the primary change and really the only change to this resolution would be an extension of the loan with the Redevelopment Commission that has been ongoing now for some time. The extension proposal, it's before you would extend the loan repayment deadline to June the thirtieth of 2018. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 23, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation?
Eddie, does this also require action of the Redevelopment Commission?
Yes, it does. The plan would be, I believe, I discussed this with Mr. Britton as well, and November, next re- We would hope that if it's passed by the council, we still have until the end of the year to get this taken care of, but we would have ample time to get that before the Redevelopment Commission.
Thanks.
What else?
I have a question. What?
Councilman Jefferson.
Didn't we, Earl, in 2018, weren't we going to do a lower amount for the redevelopment loans as opposed to the five million?
Well, I mean, we've been working with a total of, of nine this year, five redevelopment and four tax anticipation warrant. With this being extended to June, if we're going to reduce short-term debt, the likely source to reduce would be tax anticipation warrant. This relates to the comprehensive financial plan discussion that we had several months ago.
We think the reduction that'll come under the tax anticipation warrant area and not redevelopment loan?
And the, and what we borrow from the banks, the tax anticipation warrant loans from the banks.
So that will lead to less next year?
Well, that's my hope.
That was in the plan.
And then I think, I think we go to two million on this one later.
And that's why it's only through June of 18, and we haven't asked to go beyond that at this point.
So when Councilman Elliott says later, is he talking about 2018, the second half of 2018?
Tentatively, there is a plan to reduce this later on in 2018.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for a long evening. Michelle, you got something?
Just a reminder, we will have a special meeting next week at 5:30. Notices will go out on Monday, and the meeting will be Thursday, November ninth at 5:30. It will be a special presentation. Councilman Azar?
I would like to make the most important motion ever. I move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Aller, that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, Michelle.